It is my pleasure to call to order the November 10, 2021, monthly meeting of the Abington Township Board of Commissioners. Can we please start with a roll call?
Commissioner Thompson?
Here.
Brodsky?
Here.
Bowles?
Here.
Carswell?
Here.
Rossman?
Here.
Vaughn?
Here.
Schreiber?
Here.
Veighy?
Here.
Weingrad?
Here.
DePlacido?
Here.
Myers?
I already thought it was called here.
Zepone?
Here.
Bowman?
Here.
Hecker?
Here.
Spiegelman?
Here. And I just would like to announce that Commissioner Schreiber is going to be with us late due to an unavoidable scheduling conflict. Of course, as folks know, we are meeting on an unusual night, a Wednesday, because tomorrow is Veterans Day. Can we please all join together for the Pledge of Allegiance? All right. We are going to start. Actually, I have one brief announcement to add. This is just a reminder and thank you to Commissioner Thompson for reminding me to remind everyone of this. The rescheduled Future Land Use Public Workshop, part of the Vision 2035 Abington Township Comprehensive Plan, that Future Land Use Public Workshop is going to be held this Saturday, November 13, 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. at the Crestmont Clubhouse at Crestmont Park. All right. Thank you again, Commissioner Thompson, for that reminder. Since we do not have any presentations tonight, we are going to start with public comment on agenda items, please. Oh, I'm sorry. We do have one additional announcement. Obviously, one of tonight's agenda items is going to be the public hearing on the Penn State text amendment. As that is a public hearing, public comment will be allowed during that section, during that public hearing. So if you're here to make a comment regarding Penn State, you don't need to make that now. You can make that shortly when we get to that public hearing agenda item. So, public comment on all other agenda items. We'll start with folks who are here in the room, and then we will move to folks who are joining us via Zoom.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Stephen Moss. I reside at 1226 Oliver Road in Huntington Valley. I'm here for the Minel Project. My biggest problem with the project is the six homes that they're going to build, but it's only the one home that's really going to affect me. House number three is going to take up approximately a little more than half of the view of my backyard, 15 feet from my property line. Was that a question? Oh, I thought I heard a question. So, I mean, the eyesore, the price decrease in my home value, but it's really the privacy of having a side of a house looking into my yard and vice versa. And, you know, please, just, I can't believe they can't put the house back a little bit more. That half of it's on my property and half is on my neighbor's property. And then that way, you know, maybe with some trees planted or something like that, it wouldn't be such an eyesore or a deterrent for someone to buy my house if I should sell. And that is my biggest problem with the...I mean, please, Mr. Manfredi, I mean, I talked to you before. I mean, you understand where I'm coming from. You said in the Zoom meeting. But to look at a side of a house that's over 30 feet tall, I mean, 15 feet from my property line, I do understand and respect...I know Mr. Kozlowski's here. I know it's by code, but some things aren't just always black and white. And that's my two cents.
Thank you very much, Mr. Moss.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any other comments from folks who are here in the room first on agenda items other than Penn State? Come on up, please.
Hi. My name's Mike McLernan. I'm at 1235 Oliver Road. I'd like to comment on the construction of the homes being built on 1235 Minel Road. Since it's been, since 2017, one of the issues that I had is that there is an easement in the property line, which I'm not sure that the original plans that were made out show where exactly that easement is in the backyard. They had, the water department came out to find it. They put a couple manholes in the back of my house. Now it's pretty much 10 feet from the fence line where they're going to start the house building. It's only going to be, I think the house is what I'm trying to go by the plans from 2017, said that it was only going to be about 15 or 10 feet from the fence line, and that's where the pipeline runs straight through there. I know there's going to be some kind of a homeowners association in the agreement that they had said. We would like maybe at least additional time to discuss some more issues with Mr. Kozlowski because the agreement came to us this week. We really didn't, it's kind of vague. It kind of says there's going to be homeowners association, but doesn't say if these people that are buying the houses are going to have fees. Or there's also a plot of land that's going to be undeveloped. It looks like it could be, I'm not sure, I don't have the plans exactly again, but it looks like it could be about an acre of land, which has been pretty much running wild since 2017. We had asked Mr. Kozlowski to get back there and clean up, but alls I have is weeds coming through the fence. The fence is pretty much in disarray. I know they had talked about in the agreement to plant some more Revitas around a few of the properties, but not the whole property line. If that's the case, and you know, we wanted to try to work out maybe something a few of the neighbors would like them around the whole property line as well, just for privacy. I don't know if his plans are to repair the fence back there. Originally, the fence was probably put up because it was a farm, and there was cows and horses and everything else running around back there. So, like I said, the property hasn't really been upkept, and there's a rodent problem back there. I can vouch for that. My cat's back there every night hunting, so it'd probably be worse if he wasn't. But I would just like maybe another, you know, time to go over the agreement and go over a few more things, concerns that we had. I know that was passed back in 2017 to okay and build the property, but like I said, it lapsed, and now, you know, there's just different concerns that I think another month wouldn't hurt, I guess. That's...all right. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Any other comments from folks in the room on agenda items other than Penn State? Oh, yeah. Is it Minel Road again? I believe it is.
My name's Jacqueline Myers. I'm at 552 Hoyt Road, and most of you were probably not among those who voted to allow the building on this land in 2017. And then when we, when it just passed so quickly, we didn't even know, my neighbors and I, that it was, we were at the meeting, and we didn't know that we should have been speaking prior to the vote. We had no idea that that was an opportunity for us. My concerns are not aesthetic. My concerns are life and death, because in 1996, my property was flooded to about between four and five feet. We received help from FEMA to restore it, and FEMA, when the engineers came, said that we wouldn't have to worry because that flood shifted all of the water tables. They did all kinds of studies back there, on my property, and luckily, we have not had another problem like that. They said it was a 100-year storm, and they said that no one, no building on that kind of land, which is so impervious, could ever be approved. So we were all under the impression that that land would not be subdivided. We each wanted to buy some of that land when it went for sale, but we were told that it wouldn't be subdivided. And now we have six homes with all kinds of impervious surfaces, and I am concerned for my property, the 552, which is the lowest-lying property in the June Meadows Huntington Valley area. I took on the same amount of water that people in Roslyn took on, where two people were killed. And we lifted my children out of the basement when a flash flood. I will never forget the scene, two little ones being pulled up the steps by my husband as water came gushing into our house. The only reason we didn't lose the foundation, the engineers told us, was because my father flew to my home and started pumps, pumping out water as fast as it was coming in, and still we sustained between four and five feet. So, that's my story, and we have been told that some kind of basin is going to be put in, which is very small, the dimensions. We've asked about its, how it could hold up in another 100-year storm, and we've not gotten an answer. And then we've told about the HOA, and we want to know what the HOA is responsible for, how will it address water concerns in the event of that kind of flood, are the home buyers aware that the HOA is going to exist primarily for the flooding of existing properties, will the HOA have an association with the board and an accessible human being in the event of storm damage, what are the fees, and is it insured? Is this really a thing that is going to take care of us? Thank you. Thanks for the opportunity to speak about this once again. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much for sharing your comments. All right. Any other comments from folks in the room about any agenda items other than Penn State? And could you state your name and address for the record?
I'm Monica Vanegrift. I'm at 531 Abington Ave., and I was wondering, is it okay to discuss the ARPA funds?
That, is that, that's not actually a...
Is it an agenda point or not?
Is that, where would that fall in?
I apologize. I didn't hear the question.
The ARPA funding.
The ARPA funding would be under, if it's related to the budget.
Budget, yes.
It would be, she could comment now.
Yeah. Now would be an okay time. Thank you for asking.
I just wanted to say I'm here in support of using some of the ARPA funds for an inclusive playground. So I'm here to represent some of the parents that couldn't be here in person because they're taking care of their kids that have mobility issues or serious medical issues. My son, sorry, I get nervous. So my son, yeah, my son has been diagnosed with autism, and I have a background of design, and so that's why I've been involved for two and a half years with this committee that we're trying to put together, this inclusive playground, because none of the playgrounds in our area are really inclusive for children or for adults with any disabilities. And so I was just hoping to show my support and consideration of using the funds in order to, it's not just mobility issues or sight issues. I also have diabetes, have had it for over 40 years, use an insulin pump, and that's something that we have to consider with kids and adults who have insulin pumps, you know, interacting with playground equipment that might cause static. There are so many things to take into consideration that actually isn't being fulfilled at any of our playgrounds. So just wanted to say, like, hope everyone takes it into consideration to use some of the money that fulfills the ARPA funds for the inclusive playground.
Thank you very much for sharing your comment, and you did a great job. I know it's very nerve-wracking. And I mean, obviously, we're going to get to the budget later, but I, I mean, this is a little bit of a personal aside, but I mean, I can tell you that, you know, the inclusive playground is something that I think the board is very passionate about getting, about making a reality. And I'm going to leave it that because we're obviously, we're going to get to budget stuff in a little bit. All right. Are there any other comments on agenda items other than Penn State from folks in the room? Otherwise, then we'll turn to folks who are joining us via Zoom. Ashley, I can't see, so I'm going to leave it to you to let folks in.
Okay. At this time, I'm allowing Rosemary's PC to speak. Your microphone's unmuted. You'll need to unmute on your device.
Can you hear us?
Rosemary's PC, you'll need to unmute on your device.
No, I didn't realize that. I'm sorry.
We can hear you now. Thank you.
Well, thank you for the opportunity. My position is quite simply that a vote on this Penn State text amendment would be extremely premature.
I'm sorry, ma'am. I apologize. I'm going to interrupt you. During the Penn State public hearing, we're going to have comments, public comments on that specific item. So if you could just stay on the line, and we're going to, just like before, we're going to take folks who are on Zoom, and we're going to take folks in the room. So we will get to you on that.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Ashley, if you can go ahead and let in the next person for, again, this is public comment on agenda items other than Penn State.
This is Laura Lehman. Can you hear me?
Yes. Please go ahead.
So I am, first of all, I want to point out that your inability to allow people to speak openly, in this case, that Penn State one was a hearing, but the inability to allow people to speak openly, and they have to figure out what's an item on the agenda and what isn't an item on the agenda, and all of that is nonsense. Please change that, okay? Please change it for the people that you serve, that you say are at the top of the organizational chart, but would never allow you to behave like this if they really were. So Minel Road, I want to say, has been problematic almost from the beginning. So I want to first point out that the same developer has a development that he just developed over by Rhodes Road, and you know that the people behind started flooding after that development was built. You've had those people testifying to you. So it is of great concern that these people have had this kind of silliness going on without somebody really putting down their foot and saying, no, you can't have more rights than you have. In the one case where there is 15 feet between the side of the house and the back, backyards are supposed to be longer, and so you have two backyards together that separate the houses. But because the house was turned, the one gentleman's backyard is right up against the 15-foot side yard, which should never be in an R2 district. And that needed consideration when that was being approved. I can't even understand how it would have gotten approved. The next thing is that this basin that they have apparently is being put under a paved road that the township is going to take possession of, which, if the homeowner fees are not sufficient to pay to dig up the road when there is a problem and to fix it, which would be an excruciating amount of money from their pockets, then there's going to be a problem, and probably the township residents will end up paying for it because somebody will make another deal and say, well, we had to, you know, they were in an emergency situation. So it never should, we should not be approving things like this, the kinds of things that are being approved. And also, I want to say that not posting the document last month and this month is problematic. We have a township manager who is not meeting any of his obligations with literally posting things and the times of things. And as you all know, you saw the email, not answering questions that he swore in public that would be answered.
Mrs. Lehman, your time has expired. Thank you very much for sharing your comments. All right. Ashley, is there anyone else calling in from Zoom?
At this time, Stephen Miller, your microphone has been unmuted. You'll need to unmute on your device.
All right. Can you hear me now?
Yes, you can go ahead.
My name's Stephen Miller. I live on 131 Edgerton Ave. in Glenside, Ward 6. I'm here to comment also on the budget proposal, to follow up on what Monica had said earlier. I'm one of those parents of a child who has mobility issues. My son Nate's a full-time wheelchair user, and I just wanted to really make sure that the board understands how much of our critical need this inclusion park is in our township. As Monica, as stated previously, there's no park in our township that comes even close to being accessible. We're within a stone's throw of Pemberton Park, and it's a park that my son can't even really access the playground equipment due to, like, wood chip issues and other things like that. It's, and obviously can't get onto any of the equipment, let alone get near the equipment. And I just want to make sure that the amount that's budgeted from those federal ARPA funds is money that is truly needed to make this park a reality and not just a dream. We've been looking for almost two years, over two years now, on trying to find grants and funding, and it's just, it's hard out there, and it's something that is, it's a critical need in this township to have more accessibility and inclusion. I watched the previous budget meeting, and I know there were some concerns about the fact that the taxes had to be raised, and this is separate from that. These ARPA funds are federal funds that can't be used for anything that the township wants. It's very specific projects, and this inclusion park fits within those guidelines of that funding, and it's an opportunity to use it with, and get those fundings and almost fully cover the cost of the park without having to, like, affect the township's budget in other ways. So it's an opportunity to really make this a reality. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments, Steve. Ashley, do we have anyone else from Zoom?
Yes. Mr. Rooney, your microphone has been unmuted.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Joe Rooney. I'm actually out in Missouri right now tonight. A couple of quick things. The first one is, I know tomorrow's Veterans Day, but today's the Marine Corps birthday. So if there's any township employees that are Marines, I want to say happy birthday, Marine. That's near and dear to my heart. The second one is, I know you're talking about the budget. Taxes are always an unbelievable issue. Please, Commissioners, don't raise taxes on everybody this year. You've got to look at somewhere. I know there was a commissioner last week, or last meeting, that talked about how the township is down to the bone. Well, that's what everybody always says, but please, look closely at this stuff. And the third one is, after the last meeting, I took a good look at the open records law, and Laura Lehman was correct last meeting. She was in compliance with paragraph 710.1(c), which gives all of our residents the opportunity to speak up at any meeting when they see a violation. And when you guys interrupted her, you, in fact, violated her right to point that out. So I didn't say anything last meeting I should have, and you guys were wrong, and Laura was true. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Ashley, is there anybody else? Again, I can't see, so.
Ms. Avins, your microphone is unmuted.
Good evening. I just wanted to ask a question about 1235 Minel Road. Was this something that ever went before the Planning Commission? I see it's a saldo, but I don't think this is something that the EAC...
I'm sorry, Kaki. I apologize. This was my oversight. Could you state your name and address for the record, please?
I'm very sorry.
Thank you.
My name is Kaki Evans. I live at 1132 Lindsay Lane in beautiful Jenkentown. I'm looking at the Minel Road. There's nothing else in the agenda packet that has any background, so forgive me if I'm ignorant, but I don't know if this is something that ever went before the EAC, or if it ever should have gone before the EAC, because I see this as a saldo. But if it ever went before the Planning Commission, I may be wrong, but this doesn't ring a bell at all to me. And, you know, I'm saying that because whenever I hear residents speak about stormwater management problems, of course, I'm going to be concerned about that. So if someone could get back to me just to clarify that in the future, I'd really appreciate it. Thank you. And in terms of the budget, I just want to give kudos to the Abington Police Department. Without us, our EAC even having to ask them, they put in for some police hybrid vehicles, and I think, I just think the world of the Abington Police Department. And, you know, I was talking to Deputy Chief Porter the other evening, and he said it's a no-brainer, and they're just a pleasure to work with in so many ways. When you think you're having a courageous conversation, you really don't have to be courageous. They're wonderful, and please support them in every way possible. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Kaki. Ashley, do we have anybody else?
There are no more hands raised at this time.
All right. Thank you very much. And again, there will be a public comment period as part of the Penn State text amendment public hearing. I turned my mic off. Now, we are going to move on to the minutes and consent agenda, and we will turn to Ward Vice President and Ward One Commissioner Tom Hecker.
Thank you, President Spiegelman. This is a motion to approve the items listed in this evening's consent agenda, items A through C, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments from Commissioners joining us via Zoom, from Commissioners here in the room? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, President Spiegelman.
Thank you, Vice President Hecker. And now, for the unfinished business of the General Board of Commissioners, we turn back to Vice President Hecker.
Thank you, President Spiegelman. Before I read the motion, I'm going to turn to Ward Two Commissioner Ken Brodsky.
Thank you, Vice President. So, as many of you know, we've had discussions about this particular issue in the past at this point, and many of the neighbors and residents of Minel Road are here this evening, and there's been discussions that have been ongoing, and some have been fruitful, some not so much at this point. There is an agreement pending regarding a...take off the mask? Would that help?
No, just closer. It's good.
Is this a sore microphone, Mason? Just kidding, just kidding, just kidding. Commissioner DePlacido would understand that reference. So, to make a long story short, and not to make this a little empty issue because we have other items to deal with tonight, many of the neighbors are here this evening, and I've discussed it with them, and it is the desire and wish of the immediate neighbors of Minel Road who are here tonight, that they would like some additional time to meet with the developer, which I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, he, just outside in the hallway, said he'd be willing to further meet with the neighbors themselves. And I'm inclined to say, I'm okay with that before we do anything with this, okay? And with the understanding that this is good-faith negotiations, and that this is not going to, in any way, I want to enter into these negotiations, further negotiations at the request of the neighbors, and I'm okay with that, but with the understanding that this comes back in December for a final vote, one way or the other. And whether there's an agreement, whether there's not an agreement, may not necessarily be fruitful discussion. Then again, it may be, but I'm okay with that at this point. So I would put it out there at this point to hold this till next month, if that's a formal motion to table at this point. That is the desire of the immediate neighbors in the community, and I'm inclined to honor their request. Any comments, questions, concerns? Commissioner Bowman. I don't mean to take this over. I'm sorry.
No, it's fine.
Is the developer here to speak for himself? Yes.
And if you could state your name and address for the record, of course.
Stephen Kozlowski, 872 Jenkentown Road, Elkins Park. I've been working on this project for quite some time, as many of you know. For the last two years, I've been trying to get this plan recorded, and I've been unsuccessful.
I'm sorry, Mr. Kozlowski. Could folks in the audience please be quiet while folks are talking, because we need to hear everybody. Thank you. Please continue, Mr. Kozlowski.
So for two years, I've been trying to get the plans, the fully approved plans, recorded, and have resistance from the township. So I agreed and made some concessions, one of which is putting the stormwater management system under the road in a homeowners association, which I believe was the township's desire. I did that. I met with the neighbors last month. Spent a lot of money on legal fees, got back and forth, coming to this agreement, and we'd like, I'd like a vote on it tonight.
I'd like to respond just briefly on behalf of the neighbors, that much of this is, if you look back on the history of why we're here today, a lot of the gravamen of the current complaint, which is Mr. Kozlowski's at this point in time, is in a certain respect, certain way, self-imposed. So I don't think 30 days is going to make a whole heck of a lot of difference. So I don't think 30 days is going to make a whole heck of a lot of difference in terms of whether you move forward in your project or anyway. You self admittedly indicated out in the hallway that you're not even going to begin this project until the spring at, at a minimum. So I don't see the prejudice or the harm in allowing the neighbors to meet with you for an additional 30 days. And you have to remember back on the history of this, of why this initially is here even in the first place. So I'm not going to go into that now, because I don't think it should remain to public discussion at this point. But I would suggest to you that if that's the request of the neighbors, which you're going to develop in that neighborhood, then you should consider it. But that's up to you.
I would be more than happy to meet with the neighbors, but I would like a vote on the present agreement tonight.
I understand your position. I don't agree with it. I think the neighbors want to meet first, and I'm willing to side with it with the, with the neighbors. If that's their request, then I think that should be honored, and I think this should be held.
Commissioner Bowman?
We put this off last month for this intention, and we were told that it would come back and we'd vote this night. So I'd like to vote on it.
President Spiegelman?
Yes. Is that Commissioner Zappone?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Zappone, please. Go ahead.
If the Ward Commissioner has met with the residents, the taxpayers in that area, and they got together with Commissioner Brodsky, and they said, look, give us a little more time, let's get a little more information, okay? There's no harm in that. It's a no-brainer. Okay? This is what the neighbors, the residents, the taxpayers want, and this project's going to affect them. So there's no harm giving them a little extra time. So I'm in agreement with Commissioner Brodsky to let the neighbors have the time that they need. It's going to affect them.
Thank you, Commissioner Zappone. Solicitor Clark, not to put you on the spot, but I know certainly you were, you know, involved when this, as this agreement was being crafted. Would you like to weigh in here, or could we ask you to weigh in here?
Sure. So essentially, this development was approved back in 2017 in response to a question from one of the residents earlier this evening. It went through the, the full regular process back in 2017. It was submitted to the Planning Commission, it was reviewed by, by township staff, and it was approved. And were it not for the fact that the developer, Mr. Kozlowski, was not able for, for certain reasons to get his plans recorded, we wouldn't be here this evening. So eventually, he brought the project back a few years later and wanted to record his plans. And at that time, the township engineer looked at the stormwater issues and had some concerns with the stormwater issues. Township engineer didn't have any concerns with any other aspect of the project. We began to have discussions with Mr. Kozlowski's attorney regarding the stormwater, and eventually, being unable to reach an agreement regarding the stormwater system, the board voted to not extend the deadline for recording and to deny the plan. It was subsequently appealed to the Montgomery County Court of Common Pleas, where it is now. We have continued our discussions with the applicant's attorney, and we have reached an agreement that essentially deals with the stormwater. The stormwater will be, the stormwater system will be in the street, which will be dedicated to the township, but the homeowners' association will be responsible for the maintenance and repair of the stormwater system. As part of this agreement, there will be a separate stormwater management agreement, and in that stormwater management agreement, it will also lay out the, the responsibility of the individual homeowners and the individual homeowners' association to manage the stormwater system in the project. Divit, our insurance carrier, has contributed some money to this matter to help defray the cost. And as I said, we're in, we're in active litigation right now, and there is not, from the township perspective, there really isn't anything further to negotiate, because some of the issues that were raised by the residents this evening are not related to what is at the heart of the lawsuit, which is the stormwater system. Not the location of the buildings, not the setbacks of the buildings, because those were all approved in 2017. It is merely at this time to deal with who's going to manage and who's going to be responsible for the stormwater system.
Thank you, Solicitor Clark. One, one additional question. I think, I think Commissioner Weinberg looks like he has a question. I just have one additional question. If, if this is, if this is bumped, you know, continued bumped for, for another, another month, is there potential jeopardy, legal, financial jeopardy for, for the township and, and the people, you know, the taxpayers we represent?
The money that was contributed by Divit, and Mr. Manfredi may be a little bit better to speak to this than I am, but the money that was contributed by Divit with, with the expectation from Divit that this matter would be resolved by, by sometime in October. And then when it got pushed, we went back to Divit, and the expectation is that the matter will be resolved this month. There is, the risk is always that if the applicant wishes not to go forward with the settlement, or wishes to, you know, can, can continue with the lawsuit, then we could be at risk in that regard. But the only money that, other than some small amount of additional fees over the next month, the only money is if the Divit money is no longer available to the township, and that is $10,000.
Okay. And has Divit given any indication as far as, you know, do we have any indication from them as far as if, if letting this go another month would, would affect that, with the availability of that $10,000?
Divit's, Divit expected the case to be settled in, in October, which is what we originally told them. After it got continued in October, we went back to Divit, and again, now their expectation is that it'll be resolved this evening.
All right. Thank you, Solicitor Clark. Commissioner Weinberg, do you have a question?
Actually, you asked my questions.
Oh.
So, thank you.
Well, all right then. All right. So are there any other questions? Because I think Commissioner Brodsky was, was making a motion, I think, to--
Commissioner Spiegelman.
Yeah, oh, Manager Manfredi.
I just want to be clear. Solicitor Clark is correct in everything he said, but I just want everyone to understand that Divit's contribution to this settlement agreement was because we chose to have our counsel represent us in, in this matter. I do not believe that Divit, if this does not get resolved, will contribute that money again. So we would have to bear the cost of the litigation if it proceeds. Just want everyone to understand.
And you are referring to this getting settled tonight?
If, I can't say for sure that, that this would not be settled in 30 days. I just don't want anyone to think that if this goes, gets pushed, if the settlement agreement is pulled from the table, and there's no longer a settlement agreement because the developer decides not to do so, and begins to re-initiate litigation, if that $10,000 that we're looking at expires, and we are on our own, we would have to fund the litigation. I just want everyone to understand that.
Thank you, Manager Manfredi. All right. So Commissioner Brodsky, did you make, did you make a motion to table this or to continue this for?
I did make a motion to push this to next month, to table this for this month at this point. If I may just have a moment to address the concerns of both the manager and also the solicitor at this point. As we all know, with any litigation, there's always risk. There's risk in what the courts may do, there's risk in what the parties may or may not do with this point. Just based on my involvement in this matter, I believe it's the indication of both parties that they would like to eventually put this to rest on both sides and reach an agreement. I don't think the individuals want to go forward with litigation. I don't think so. That's just my impression, but again, I could be wrong. But then again, who am I to foreclose the neighbors from at least making one last effort to talk to the developer if they want to try and resolve out some of these issues at the same time, or at least see what they can do on this one? And I'm not saying that the plan itself isn't going to, there's a settlement's not going to go forward. We're not necessarily opposed, I don't believe the neighbors or the residents are opposed to the resolution itself. I think they want to tweak some fine points to this, and I'm hesitant to foreclose that one last opportunity. But at the same time, if we're now hearing, you know, do we have a reservation or rights letter from Divit? I don't want to go that further down that road, and don't want to get into that discussion at this point in time, but, you know, it's, it's a tough decision to make. Do you err on the, on the side of caution and give the neighbors and the residents one last opportunity? Do you just take a hard-line stance and say, we're going to let the insurance carrier wag the tail of the dog and let them dictate that at this point? It's a tough, it's a tough decision. It's not easy, but the residents have made it abundantly clear to me, the folks that live in the immediate community, they made it abundantly clear that they'll take this opportunity here. I don't think that that's unreasonable. And I'm not saying that, I mean, I'd like assurances from the developer that they're not going to walk away from settlement negotiations also. I mean, the worst you're having at this point is you have where we're at today. So if there's nothing further that's fruitful in the discussions of the parties, and here we are, we're back next month at the same time with the same issue in front of us, and then you take the vote. I don't necessarily see the harm and prejudice in that, but if we're going to be dictated by what the carrier has to say, then maybe that's an issue.
Thank you, Commissioner Brodsky. And just for the record, your, you know, your time, your time and work with and on behalf of the neighbors is, is acknowledged and appreciated. So we have, we have a motion now, a motion now to, 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 to table this for a month. Solicitor Clark, we need to--
We need a second.
We, we--
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion, a second.
Now we need to call the vote.
Okay. Right, with no further comment--
No further discussion on a motion--
Okay, so this, so Commissioners, this is a vote on Commissioner Brodsky's motion to table this matter for, for one additional month. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed?
Me.
All right. I think, I think, do we need, do we need an official count? I think that was--
Yeah, I think we probably do.
Okay. All right. Could everyone, well, do we only have, do we have the one--
There's only one dissent.
Ms. Viall could do a roll call.
All right. Let's, if we could quickly do, we could quickly do a roll call vote on the motion to table for a month.
I think it's clear. What? Are you going to roll?
Do we, I mean, do we need, it, it does sound like it was, there was only one--
I thought it was clear, but--
Oh, no, oh, no. I thought you were asking for the roll call.
No, 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 no.
All right.
I'm only saying if you wanted--
Sorry about that. No, the last thing I want to do is delay things further. No, okay. So, so the motion, so the motion to table, the motion to table for one month carries.
Okay. I think the problem that you have right now is that there is a recommendation that when you are partially virtual, that you, there should be a voice vote, so everyone in, in the room can, and watching, can hear who voted half. And I don't know, I couldn't, from my seat, I couldn't tell who was a yes and, and who was a no. It probably should be, and we should probably also think about this for the Penn State vote, they probably should be roll call voice votes, so everyone in the room, everyone watching on TV knows how, how the vote was, was taken.
All right. I think for, okay. So in this, in this case, and for Penn State, let's do, let's do a roll call. If we could please have a--
Before we, before we pause--
Commissioner Brodsky, yes.
I want any one additional--
No, you can't. It's a motion to table. We have to call the vote. There's no further discussion on a motion--
Oh, right. We're still, we're still in the middle of the motion. Right. Sorry. This is, this is live government, everybody. Please, go ahead.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Brodsky?
Yes.
Commissioner Bold?
Yes.
Commissioner Carswell?
Yes.
Commissioner Rothman?
Yes.
Commissioner Vaughn? Commissioner Schreiber? Commissioner Veighy?
Yes.
Commissioner Weinberg?
Yes.
Commissioner DePlacido?
Yes.
Commissioner Myers?
Yes.
Commissioner Zappone?
Yes.
Commissioner Roman?
No.
Vice President Hecker?
Yes.
President Spiegelman?
Yes. All right. So, as you said, Commissioner Brodsky, we'll, we will be here in, we'll see, we'll see you in one month.
Am I permitted to make one more comment?
Yes. Briefly, please, because as you know, we do have a robust--
I have, I have an expectation that both, both parties will initiate in good faith and make an earnest effort to get this resolved out that's acceptable and agreeable to all parties. And that's my expectation. That's it.
Thank you, Commissioner Brodsky.
Spiegelman, that concludes our unfinished business for the board.
All right. Now we turn to the unfinished business of the Land Use Committee. And before, before we begin, I'm going to call individually on both Commissioner, Commissioner Thompson, who is the Chair of the Land Use Committee, and also Commissioner Schreiber in that order. So Commissioner Thompson?
Thank you, President Spiegelman. For the next agenda item, I wish to recuse myself from the vote and the discussion this evening as an employee of KCBA Architects, who is the architect of record on the project.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. And now, Commissioner Schreiber?
The same. I wish to recuse myself from this vote. I am an employee of Penn State Abington and have, on previous votes involving the university, I've also recused myself from those.
All right. So we have the two recusals. Thank you both, Commissioners Thompson and Schreiber. So now we will turn to the Vice Chair of the Land Use Committee, Ward Seven Commissioner, Stuart Weinberg.
Thank you, President Spiegelman. This is item LU-02090921. Motion to Consider and Adopt Proposed Ordinance 2186, an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance of the Township of Abington, providing foreign regulating a college/university campus use in the CS Community Service District, an ordinance 2187, an ordinance amending the official zoning map of Abington Township by rezoning three parcels from the residential low-density R1 district to the Community Service CS district. And before I ask for a second, I understand that the applicant will conduct a brief presentation for the board?
Yes, actually, Commissioner Weinberg, what we're going to do is, Solicitor Clark will correct me if I'm wrong, but once there is a second, we're going to go ahead and open the public hearing, and then there will be the presentation, and then there will also be a time for public comment. So once we have that second, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing.
Second.
All right. So it's been, so it's been moved and seconded, and now I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing on Land Use Committee, item LU-02090921, the proposed ordinance 2186. Public hearing is now open. Can we please begin with a presentation from the folks from Penn State, representing Penn State?
The struggle is real to decide which glasses I have to wear right now. But good evening, and thank you for having us here and for your time and consideration of the text amendment and the map amendment.
I, I, I sincerely apologize.
Hold on. We've got, we have a whole other conversation going on over here.
Excuse me.
This conversation needs to be moved outside.
Yes. We're, we're in the middle of a public hearing. Thank you. Chancellor Dela Carpen, please--
Thank you. Thanks. So I'm Margot Dela Carpeni, the Chancellor at Penn State Abington. I have colleagues from our design team here, both in person and on our Zoom, who have been part of this project, you know, throughout the time. Okay, good. So we are, so these are my colleagues. I won't introduce everybody, but we have representatives from Penn State, from University Park, from Eastburn and Gray, from KCBA Architecture, Traffic Planning and Design, and Doug Waite, who's a civil engineer with Gilmore and Associates. So we've got a large part of our team, so we'll be able to answer questions. So we are here tonight for the public hearing on the text and map amendments. We're specifically asking for a map amendment that would provide community service zoning for our contiguous campus, and a text amendment which would create an E18 zoning district for college and universities, which have different needs from K-12 campuses. Mr. Jonas from Eastburn and Gray will provide a detailed overview of our request, and then Ms. Thomas from KCBA will provide an overview of the proposed building. So just a brief overview of the project. At Penn State Abington, we have, we are very stretched for space. Our, we have students, and I've been before this commission before, we have students who are having classes in converted closets, and, and our spaces is truly an issue. This will be the first new academic space built on our campus since 1973. The new building will provide state-of-the-art, modern learning spaces for our existing students, provide learning spaces that meet the needs of today's professional expectations, and will prepare our students for the modern workforce that they're going to enter. Penn State is a world-class institution, consistently ranked as one of the top universities in the world, and our ability to be competitive and offer our students that world-class Penn State experience requires investment in our people, in our community, but also in our facilities. Providing our existing students with innovative degree programs, high-impact curricular opportunities, and modern learning spaces and technology enables Abington to provide the highest-quality educational experience that Penn State is known for. Additionally, the building that we are proposing will be a green building. It will be LEED-certified, as Lionsgate is, which is our residential facility on Old York Road, and it'll positively contribute to the sustainability initiatives in Abington Township and beyond. So the project began back in 2014 with the completion of the Campus Master Plan. Throughout the time between then and now, there have been feasibility studies, a number of community forum events, work with the township, and the formal township process began in July of this year with our appearance before the Committee of the Whole, twice before the Planning Commission, and finally in September before the Board of Commissioners. Throughout the formal process and the meetings with the neighbors, we've listened, we've worked with the township and community to address community concerns, we've revised the proposal to reflect our partnership with the community and our commitment to community engagement and to being an asset in the region. My arrival in January, I have seen the very earlier versions of the text, and text amendment, and what you have before you reflects the, the depth of the revisions, a comparison of the documents, you wouldn't even realize they were the same document. So a lot of work has gone in over the years in being responsive, and we'll continue to collaborate with the township and, of course, the community as we move forward. And I just wanted to share a few of the examples of this continued collaboration. Since my arrival in January this year, I've had the opportunity to listen and respond to neighbor concerns about traffic around our campus. This is an ongoing effort on our part at Penn State Abington. We have made some significant changes to our operations in order to address these concerns. So this fall, we implemented a parking permit fee and distribution control, which results in, resulted in about a 36% reduction in permitted vehicles traveling to our campus. We reduced our Yellow Bird bus route frequencies by 11 runs each day. We've installed digital speed limit signs on the campus side of the residential streets. We are, we have our university police and the Abington Township Police, who work very closely on education and enforcement around the campus to keep our, our streets safe. And we just recently implemented our discounted SEPTA commuter pass, where we are subsidizing or cost-sharing with students and with SEPTA to be able to provide a reduced rate for bus and train passes. And we continue, as I said, this is an ongoing effort. We are working to purchase digital parking space counters, so that when somebody comes up to a parking lot on campus, they know exactly how many spots are available. We are working to implement a bike-share program with community access on the campus. We are seeking additional off-campus parking venues. I've reached out to local realtors and looking for a large parking lot, so we can bring even more of that parking off of our campus. And we're also looking at ways to incentivize alternative modes of transportation among our faculty, staff, and students. I know there have also been additional concerns that have been raised over the last few weeks. There's been a document circulating that has questions about the project.
Chancellor Geller-Carpini, again, this conversation in the back of the room needs to stop.
Thank you, Solicitor Clark. Apologies. Chancellor Geller-Carpini, please continue.
So, as I said, there have been additional concerns that have come to my attention. There's been a document circulating that has questions about the project, and there has been a suggestion that we have, at Penn State, we've not responded to those. I've reviewed the document carefully. Many of the questions are definitional, or they're part of zoning law, or legal policy, or legal regulations. The issue related to the project, those issues have been answered, and I, you know, at the number of community meetings, I've gone through the questions raised. I've got that document, I provided answers to each, and as you ask me questions, I'm happy to address those this evening, so that we leave that, you know, we've answered the questions that are concerning to you. And before I return to the present, before I turn the presentation over to Mr. Jonas, I just want to share a picture of Lionsgate, our residential building over on Old York Road. The building was built with the same deep engagement with the community and the township. It's a LEED-certified building. The addition of Lionsgate has added positively to the aesthetic value of that stretch of the road, and it contributes to the local economy in very positive ways. We will be no less responsive or responsible in our commitment to community partnerships and to being good neighbors and good stewards of our campus and community with this new building. So I will, at this point, turn this over to Dr., Mr. Jonas.
Good evening. I'm Mark Jonas. We have here tonight a request for two legislative amendments. And as this board well knows, this is not land development. So we're discussing, we're discussing use, and we're not discussing details of development such as stormwater and those details that are part of an entire process. The university is zoned primarily CS, except for three parcels that we'll be talking about that are subject of the map amendment. The map amendment will rezon these three parcels to community service. There was no effort to change the zoning on the cross the street from the campus. Proposed text amendment will allow Penn State to build the academic building. We looked, and you'll see a comparison chart of the existing E14 use, and we have suggested revisions of that to accommodate a college or university. We are proposing the creation of an E18 new category of university campus for colleges and universities, and I believe former Township Commissioner Klein is here, and he will discuss how during the very global effort to create a new zoning ordinance, certain very large, significant parcels of the township were not then addressed with the idea that at some point they would come into closer focus. Penn State certainly being one of those, and that's what we're discussing here tonight. So this relates to the map amendment. This is the before. You'll see, we've highlighted the location of the new academic building. This is all about one new academic building, as the chancellor said, the first one since 1973. That little corner on the top left is now zoned R1. Those are three component parcels. Those are the subject of the map amendment. This is the after. This is the before, and this is the after. And then we were asked to provide some additional information about the individual properties. The first is 1639 Cloverly Lane. It is 30,633 square feet. Next is 1665 Cloverly Lane, 30,400 square feet. And the third, 1681 Cloverly Lane, 43,560 square feet. Those parcels are proposed to be used for very limited administrative functions. There was, very early on, a proposal to have some limited use of parcels across the street. That is no longer part of either the map amendment and is certainly not part of the text amendment. The chancellor said and noted that the ordinance has gone through a lot of iterations. We submitted a formal request in June. This is six months later. Before that, there was a lot of informal give-and-take about the draft of the ordinance in order to address and highlight any issues that township staff might have. In some large fashion, the ordinance you have tonight is very different than the one that we submitted. We took a look at certainly the neighborhood. There was extensive looking at parking and traffic with consultations with township staff. We took a look at the zoning ordinance, we took a look at the zoning map, and we took a very close look at the E14 use, which was a generic category for all schools, including colleges and universities. And I think you've heard from the chancellor that a university, a college, has some very different needs. We tried to do that while respecting the work that had gone into the 2017 ordinance and the E14 use, and this is a comparison chart to show how many of the parameters really remain unchanged, and there were a few that were changed, in order to accommodate the building. We need this amendment in order to accommodate one new building on the campus. Some of the issues you've heard about have to do with impervious surface coverage, having new building length. Interestingly enough, the E14 use has a larger or a longer building length than what we are proposing for the E18 use. Maximum impervious coverage, we had proposed for 45%. Interestingly enough, in the AO district, an E14 school requires 50% impervious, so our proposal was somewhere in between. We took a look at building height, respecting the setbacks, particularly the neighbors who are across the street. We took a look at access security features, location of trash, storage tanks, and loading. We looked at the requirements for a master's facilities plan. We got a lot of feedback from the Township Planner, Mike Narkovich, in terms of the parameters for when a master facilities plan should come into being. This, again, has to do with one new building, and it would not require the master facilities plan at this juncture. We took a hard look at setbacks from residential areas in terms of the types of uses that the university might have on any given year. The E14 use school of college does not have a requirement for a traffic study. With input from Mike Narkovich, we added the requirement for a traffic study, depending on the impact of the proposed use. There was a lot of early discussion about steep slopes and whether or not there was some question about steep slope regulations. We determined, confirmed by the township engineer, that the area could be disturbed for the academic building. Will not involve any steep slopes. We took a look at parking. We had a nice model with Lionsgate, taking a look at all the efforts that a university and particularly Penn State does to accommodate parking onsite and offsite. You heard the considerable efforts expressed by the chancellor this evening about the dealing with parking and trying to reduce parking on the campus. We addressed loading berths, and we used some of the formula that was used successfully to Lionsgate for parking. So that is the sum and substance of the, of the amendments. Again, these are legislative amendments, and we are certainly hoping and asking for the board to vote favorably on both of them tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Jonas.
Good evening. This image shows the proposed location for the academic building.
I'm sorry, could you please just introduce yourself for the record?
I'm sorry, Stacey Thomas with KCBA Architects.
Great, thank you.
Cloverly Lane is on the left. The site was selected primarily for generally its openness, its relatively level. It's also large enough to allow us to locate the building here and still maintain a pretty generous green space between the building and the street. This is a conceptual site plan. Again, Cloverly Lane is on the left, Woodland Road across the top. You can see the proposed academic building in light blue. The darker blue buildings represent the existing buildings on the campus. The lighter gray color around the academic, the proposed academic building is showing the proposed new paving area, and the little bit darker gray color shows the existing paving around the, around the campus. The proposed access drive off Cloverly Lane is to the left of the building on the plan. That location was selected specifically to avoid having any residences directly across the street. The existing topography and the landscape also allows for good sightlines from that position for people exiting the driveway there. The driveway is proposed to connect to two parking areas, a small extension of Lot L along Cloverly Lane. We are proposing a landscape buffer between that parking lot and Cloverly, which I'll show some images of in a few minutes, and also a second parking area on the other side of the building, below the, the building on the plan. Including the proposed academic building, the overall building coverage on the campus would be at 8.4%. The impervious coverage would be at 40.2%, and a corresponding green area of 59.8. We'd like to share some preliminary images of the conceptual design of the building. As the chancellor mentioned, we have shared these images with the community at several meetings over the past few years, and the images we're going to show tonight do incorporate some adjustments that we've made based on that feedback that we've received. The academic building is, is just, just what it sounds like. It's proposed to house academic space, classrooms, and faculty offices. It is proposed as a three-story building, but the topography of the site allows us to maintain a two-story volume facing the public street. And overall, spread across the three stories, the buildings propose at just over 74,000 square feet. This is an image of, of the entry facade from Cloverly Lane, so you can see the generous amount of green space in front of the building. The roadway that you see in the distance there is the driveway within the campus, so internal drive. The scale and the proportion of the building are designed to be in harmony with the, the surrounding campus and the neighborhood. Just a little bit closer view of that entrance facade. You can see the material palette is also drawing from the surrounding context, using materials like natural stone, colors that are found in that neighborhood. Also, the proportion and the scale of the windows and the, the entrance are designed to be in keeping with the, the surrounding buildings. Moving to the other facade that faces the public street, you'll see continuing that same scale and material palette onto this facade. The programming of the building also is taking into consideration that this is the facade that's closest to the public street and locating the quieter functions here, so largely faculty offices. The trees that you see in the foreground here representing the existing tree line along Cloverly Lane, and the next couple of slides show the location of that landscape buffer I mentioned between the parking lot and the street from this area. So the idea is to plant this buffer with a variety of plantings, so it has a more natural look, as opposed to just a line of the same type of planting. So it's aesthetically pleasing to the neighborhood when viewed from this area and maintains a buffer all year. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
So at this point, we can take your questions, we can hear a public comment, and then I'll wrap up as we hear and answer questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Chancellor Geller-Carpini. I think Commissioner Hecker, if this is okay with you, obviously you are the Board One Commissioner, maybe we'll go ahead and have public comments and then comments from commissioners.
That's fine with me, President Spiegelman.
So we can hear the public comments first. All right, we're going to change the order a little bit. If we could start with the public comment from the folks joining us on Zoom, and then we're going to have the Penn State public comment from folks who are here in the room. So actually, if you could let, again, I can't see, but if you could let the first commenter on, again, from, for the folks listening on Zoom, this is public comment on the, as part of this, this public hearing on Penn State.
Ms. Weiss, your microphone is unmuted.
Is, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. My name is Lucia Weiss. I live at 1345 School Lane in Ridal, right across the street from Penn State. I thank you for your time this evening. If I didn't know any better, listening to the presentation that was just given, I would think that we're here for very different reasons. We're not interested in the building yet. I don't think we are there. I think we are here for the text and map amendment that should be discussed, and not about the building that's about to be coming. There are many questions that we, the neighbors, still have that are in this. I noticed that Mr. Jonas went over a number of the items quickly, but there are very, very far-reaching consequences to this amendment that will be here for a long time to come, and not just for us, the neighbors, to Penn State, but for very different areas around the Abington Township. And I would ask that you postpone this amendment and vote on it until we can get answers to our questions and clarifications to our questions and concerns. And please postpone the meeting for us, the residents, the taxpayers, your constituents, just like you did for the citizens who were here about the previous. just like you did for the citizens who were here about the previous project. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Weiss. Ashley, if you can let the next resident in, please.
Adele Ossenbak, your microphone has been unmuted. Mr. Ossenbak, you'll have to unmute on your device.
I'm sorry, I have no comment.
We can hear you.
I have no comment.
Oh, okay.
Rosemary, your microphone has been unmuted. You'll just have to unmute on your device.
I think I did this time, and I think I'm on time and not early.
Yes, we can, and we can hear you perfectly. You can go right ahead.
Yeah, it's Rosemary Patricelli. I live at 1271 School Lane. And as Lucia said, it's very interesting to hear the presentation that we just heard. The chancellor pointed out the number of meetings that she had apparently historical record of with the neighbors. But you know, there's something to be said about meetings and the quality of the meetings. And the, there is, the neighbors would have a very different recollection of the adequacy of the communications that we've had with Penn State on these issues. For a number of reasons, as Lucia pointed out, I strongly suggest that a vote on this text amendment is quite premature. We have very carefully called out at least 25, if not a few more, serious questions that we have regarding this proposal that we believe have yet to be addressed and satisfactorily answered. And there's been a lot of collective minds and backgrounds and experience for this gesture and these efforts. I think that we need to have the time, we need to have the, a serious effort by the university and all of their experts to address the questions. I think we all want to resolve this issue. I think we all want it to be satisfactory for our needs as a neighborhood. We're talking about a street with a lot of people that live on it, and we've already been deluged with many issues that we've tried to cope with over the years. So I think that for the benefit of all of us, as I said, we've taken this very seriously. We're not being haphazard about it. We've done our research, we've done our homework, we've talked to experts ourselves, and I think these approximate 25 questions that I'm talking about, which I won't go into in detail now, which we can present, obviously, to Penn State and their experts, I think they need to be addressed. I think it's appropriate and timely that it be done, and therefore, any vote is premature. And I thank you for the opportunity to make this suggestion, and I hope you will give it serious consideration.
Thank you very much, Ms. Patricelli.
All right, Renaj Numani Purvis, your microphone is unmuted.
It's Renaja.
Oh, apologize.
That's okay. Good evening, everyone. My name is Renaja Purvis, and I am currently a third-year pre-med student studying at Penn State Abington to become a doctor. I have resided in Penn State Lionsgate Apartments through all my years attending this university, and I am also a student leader. As a leader on this campus, my purpose is to advocate for myself and my peers as students paying lots of money for quality education at this top-ranked university. I'm originally from Niagara Falls, New York, which is about a seven-hour drive from this campus, and when I initially came here, I came for the opportunity to grow and expand my mind, which is not offered to me at home but was promised here in this community. However, just in my third year, the campus has become dull or lackluster in such a short time. I've noticed myself recently spending a lot less time on campus and having little desire to get engaged as much as I used to when I first came in my undergraduate years, and other students feel the same way, both those who live in Lionsgate and our commuter students who often compare this campus environment to a high school because of the lack of space to explore on campus. So I am here on behalf of myself, my peers, and our excellent staff to advocate for the expansion of our campus, which will bring new opportunities to grow and experience college in a more profound way. We at Penn State Abington deserve the new modern academic space that will meet the needs of today's professional expectations and prepare us, the students, for the workforce after we graduate. We deserve new innovative degree programs, co-curricular opportunities, and advanced technology that challenges the students to continue to advance personally and professionally throughout the entire duration of their college experiences. As presented already by Dr. Della Carpeini, Penn State Abington has contributed a lot to the Pennsylvania economy through financial support, through its sustainability efforts, commitment to community engagement and partnerships, and aesthetically, as it is a beautiful campus. And we just want to add to our current contributions, and this investment in our students, faculty, staff, and community is the perfect way for us to do so. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Purvis. Ashley, any other folks? Oh, are those all, oh, are those all hands? Okay, now I can, if I squint, I can see that's a lot of folks. All right.
At this time, I'm going to allow Stan Singer, your microphone is unmuted.
Good evening. My name is Stan Singer. I'm an Abington Township resident, graduate of Penn State, and past chairman of the advisory board of Penn State Abington. I'm an advocate of this democratic process and this new academic building, as well as the crucial task of being sensitive to community concerns. It's my belief that all of us can agree that support and encouragement of education is desirable and beneficial not only to the Abington community but to society. This project is not about bricks and mortar or landscaping or hardscaping. As important as these factors are, it's about the ability of young adults to be given the opportunity to elevate themselves by obtaining higher education in a modern, up-to-date facility to prepare themselves for a very competitive and technologically advanced world. And by the way, this will be a green building, as it's already been discussed. By our actions, we need to offer these students a stepping stone and not inhibit action with a stumbling block. Think of your own educational experience and what you would advocate for your children. Would you want them to have the opportunity to learn in a modern facility? Would you want them to have access to the most up-to-date technological tools? Would you want them to look forward to attending classes in a modern, bright classroom? Would you want them to benefit from learning spaces that meet the needs of today's professional expectations and prepare them for the modern workforce? Would you want your children to be enthusiastic about their learning facility? I venture that the answers to these questions are yes. Except for the Lionsgate dormitory, which serves approximately 10% of the student body, Penn State Abington is largely a commuter campus. To compete for students and offer them important value, we must keep our facilities, courses, and faculty up to date and desirable. As we all know, in any enterprise, when you stand still, you move backwards. We can't let that happen in Abington. In their great ambition to succeed, the vast majority of Penn State Abington students have at least one part-time job, and in some cases, two. They have skin in the game and expect value for their efforts and money. Since 2014, there have been numerous meetings with neighbors where Penn State administration has shared all aspects of the project, received feedback, and made architectural changes, as you've heard. Numerous studies and gatherings have taken place regarding zoning and with township administration. This is the first new academic space built on campus since 1973. It's long overdue. Let us together generate pride in the accomplishment of this worthwhile endeavor. I respectfully request that the board advance and approve Penn State's request with dispatch, and in so doing, be energized by doing the right thing.
Thank you very much, Mr. Singer.
At this time, I've unmuted the microphone of Patrice Manas. You just need to unmute on your device.
Hi, everyone. My name is Patrice Manase, a junior double major in Rehabilitation, Human Service, and Counseling and Social Justice at Penn State Abington, and a resident at Lionsgate in 1001 Old York Road. I've always imagined myself going to Penn State. It was my dream school. Having an opportunity to attend a university that is ranked as one of the top universities in the world is an honor, to make lifetime friends and connections, the opportunity to grow and learn in a university that is supplying you the resources to expand your knowledge. This is the dream that all college students would hope to achieve. I love Abington, and the professors are trying their best with what they have, but we just don't have enough space, and we need more. The three main buildings are not enough for us anymore, and never was. We have been stretching what we have with the space that we have long enough. The usual Penn State Commonwealth campus has the average square footage per student at 134. Penn State Abington has an average of 72. That is 62 less square feet than the others. Is that what we deserve? Would this be enough for your child? This year alone, I've had different classes every day in the same room, and it doesn't make sense. We deserve more room to grow and develop in different classroom spaces. I've also had the experience of having a music class in basically a closet. That wasn't a great experience, and the music department deserved more. The art program itself deserves more. The school wants to give us more by building this new building. Again, I ask you, would the space be enough for your child? I beg you to understand that the new building will be the first since 1973, and it will provide state-of-the-art, modern learning spaces for us and provide learning spaces that meet the needs of today's, today's professional expectations, which will prepare us for the modern workforce that we will enter. It will provide us with more opportunities for more degree programs and modern learning spaces. The new technology enables Abington to provide the highest-quality education experiences that Penn State is known for. The building will not only benefit us but the community itself. Having a building a green LEED certified will positively contribute to the climate action and sustainability of Abington Township and beyond. As I come to a closing, please consider the fact that Penn State Abington has contributed approximately $130 million to the PA economically. We will not increase enrollment. Its sole purpose is to serve the students already here. This building will allow individuals like me, who had to be in a closet for music class, an opportunity to grow in a new space. This issue is very important and very vital for the success of these students. I may not even see the building. I know that it's important and is needed for the students after me. Are we enough? Penn State Abington needs a new building. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. I see, Ashley, again, forgive my lack of vision, but how many other folks do we have in just on Zoom right now?
We have eight more, and then we have one individual who's requesting to speak again. They've already spoken.
All right, yeah, I mean, I don't know if we could be able to have anyone speak again, but we have eight folks on Zoom. I know we have folks here in the room. We're going to have questions from commissioners. This is, I'm going to take an unusual step here at presiding officer's discretion. With permission from you, council, is it possible to pause the public hearing for a very short, like a one-minute stretch, or stretch our legs recess, and then return and attend to one out-of-order item to sort of get it out of the way, and then return to the public hearing exactly where we left off?
Certainly within your discretion.
All right, we are going to go ahead and do that. So I'm going to go ahead and pause the public hearing. We're going to take a one-minute stretch our legs break. Upon the conclusion of the recess, we're going to attend to one matter from, from public comments on general items, just one single matter, then we're going to return to the public hearing. We are recessed for one minute. Thank you. All right, thank you, everyone, for your patience and also for your understanding of the slight divergence from some of the norms here. We are going to go ahead and hear from one resident regarding a non-agenda item matter, one three-minute comment, and then we are going to reopen the public hearing. So please.
President Spiegelman, I apologize, but I think I was muted on Zoom, on my, on the computer end. Just to verify, did anyone on Zoom catch the last minute of that?
I'll just say, I'll just say it again.
Apologize.
For the folks, yeah, for the folks who are on Zoom, thank you for waiting patiently to make your Penn State comments. We are going to hear from one resident, a little bit out of order regarding a non-agenda item, a three-minute comment on a non-agenda item. Then we are going to reopen the Penn State public hearing and immediately start with those folks on Zoom precisely where we left off. All right, please go ahead, name and address to the record.
My name is Adele Cubell, and I live at 1848 Ambler Road. I have lived there for 17 years. Abington's Town Center is in decline. The area suffers from crumbled sidewalks and curbs. The area has litter and debris on a regular basis. I want the Abington Board of Commissioners to make the maintenance of Abington a priority. This is a petition that I just read that was signed by over 200 residents of Abington Township who all agree. I have worked for over six months to clear the Abington Town Center of blight. I first contacted Commissioner Carswell in May. Ms. Carswell said that she would share my concerns with the entire Board of Commissioners in May. I foolishly believed that this phone call would get the ball rolling. Since that initial contact in May, I have called the Abington leadership numerous times. I have sent emails and photo documentation to both President Spiegelman and Vice President Hecker. Follow-up emails and phone calls were made by me. The blight continues to fester. I have reached out numerous times to Terry Castorini and Director Manfredi. Both of them are very busy and perpetually in meetings. It seems they both attend back-to-back constant land use meetings. The deteriorating environment and health concerns that come with a blighted environment should be a priority, not land use with no interest in blight. The constant land use meetings have me questioning the judgment of the Board of Commissioners. During the first of two consecutive conversations I had with Mr. Spiegelman, he seems absolutely surprised that blight is an Abington issue. Mr. Spiegelman said that bus commuters and shoppers leave trash. The photos I shared with him and other officials clearly show that commercial strip shopping areas are being allowed to destroy the environment of Abington. The situation has been ignored for years. Acadia Realty advertises that 31,000 to 32,000 cars travel up and down Old York Road each and every day. Abington Township does not enforce existing ordinances with mega realty empires. The Board of Commissioners needs to stop destroying the quality of life for the residents of Abington. Longtime residents have said they are looking to move away. New Abington residents are finding crumbling sidewalks, broken-down brick walls, filth, all within a short distance of their brand-new homes. The residents of Abington deserve to live in clean, healthy neighborhoods. Abington needs leadership, at the very least, that does not, does not destroy their environment, enforce the township codes. At this point, Abington is the worst-looking suburban area on the 611 corridor. I have photos of the entrance to Abington as we go through the Noble train station. There's wires in sidewalks that are exposed. There's all kinds of cracking. Connie Schechter here, she lives at 1849 Plankton. She has been a resident of Abington for 51 years. She is appalled at how the Abington Town Center looks and the shopping mall is maintained. She is contemplating moving. The decline of my neighborhood, she says, has been going on for a while. There's trash and debris that is not picked up on a daily basis. Dumpsters overflow, curbs and sidewalks are crumbling. I walk every day and have to be careful that I don't fall or trip. It's a safety hazard. I want Abington Township to take responsibility and do a better job with maintaining the environment and people's health. That is her statement. I have plenty of photographs of dumpsters on sidewalks that are open all the time, trash piling up over long periods.
Excuse me, just, you're at four minutes now.
This is the trash can on Sunday morning at Target, overflowing into our neighborhood again.
You have the petition with you.
Got it.
All right, would you, are you, would you also like to submit those visuals as well along with the petition?
A lot of them I gave to you, but I do want you to see the Noble ones. They're brand-new. I will give you this one from Sunday morning because it is this Sunday, every trash can was overflowing. And Acadia does not clean up like they say, the Target employees say that. The people who maintain the shopping complex say they're only paid to clean the front.
If you could give those and the petition, if you could please hand those, manage my friend to you.
Okay, thank you. Oh, and I did take pictures of, this is Huntington Road, Penn State's exercise area that they maintain, and this is the areas where it was not maintained, and for some reason, it's just left that way. There's a big piece of glass. Somebody tell me to take a photo.
Thank you, thank you for your, thank you for your comments and for submitting these materials.
...from this week. Okay, this is what it looks like. This is what it looks like in Noble Plaza, that is the piece of.
Oh, and I, and I apologize. If you could also put, if you could please put your mask back on for the remainder of the meeting.
All right, Plankton. Okay. Thank you very much for your time.
All right. Okay, thank you very much. Manager Matt Freddie has those items. And now what we're going to do, folks from Penn State and everyone else, thank you for your patience. We are going to go ahead and reopen the Penn State public hearing. We are going to continue with comments from folks joining us on Zoom right where we left off. And then, once we, once we have heard individually from everyone, we're going to go ahead to folks who want to make public comment from right here in the room, and then we're going to have commissioner questions. So Ashley, if you could continue at the point where we left off.
All right. At this time, Patrick Jones, your microphone is unmuted.
Thank you very much. I'm a resident of Abington Township, Kirkwood, five Roberts.
I'm sorry, could you, could you say your name and address for the record? Thank you.
Patrick Jones, two thirty-five Roberts Avenue. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you so much. Please continue.
And I'm just asking the commissioners to please take a vote this evening and vote yes. This is a very reasonable proposal. It's within the perimeter of the campus. It is clearly greatly needed by Penn State and the campus has worked with the neighbors. Research across the country shows that communities with, with colleges do better economically. The Township of Abington should absolutely be pro-education. And so I just ask you, please vote on this this evening. Do not delay it any further and vote yes on this very reasonable proposal from Penn State. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your comments. Ashley, if you could let the next commenter in, please.
Kathy Gothier, your microphone is unmuted at this time.
Thank you. My name's Kathy Gothier. I live in Roslyn. Two things regarding the proposed amendment, the zoning amendment regarding the words sustainability and climate action were, were talked about by many of the previous people, but I think two issues that relate to that is, one, the increase of the impervious surface from forty percent to forty-five percent. Given that this is a forty-four acre site, net acres, that would be about, would allow about two more acres plus of paving on the site. And I, I think that's an unintended consequence, but I think that needs to be looked at very carefully. I believe the chancellor from Penn State, or maybe it was their engineer, said that with the new building, et cetera, it would be forty-point-two percent impervious. So I would, I would like to see a lower impervious surface ratio. And the second thing is the twelve-foot-wide planting island for the street between the houses and parking. While the landscape plan was very nice, that was brought up, Penn State is a leader in sustainability design. I would go to them a lot of times, the Extension Office, for information, but twelve feet to get that much vegetation in would really be a problem as the, the plants grow. So I think that needs to be further, larger. And I think it would be great if the, the university could get more of the students involved in actually making the site greener as they go along, but that's getting off topic. So those two points I wanted to mention. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Kathy. Ashley, next, next caller, please.
Mike Tobin, your microphone is unmuted.
Hi, Mike Tobin, six forty-two Kirkwood, and I have one comment I want to follow up with what Kathy was just saying. The impervious surface, the E fourteen is forty and E eighteen is forty-five, and the Penn State engineer said it would, they were only looking for forty-point-two. Why wouldn't we just leave it at forty and then just make a variance for that particular site? In addition, the case goes from sixty-two to fifty-five percent, and I believe the engineer said they were only looking for like sixty percent. So why not leave the numbers forty and sixty-two and go for a zoning, go for a variance as opposed to a text change for those particular items? The reason I bring that up is because the, the other property that'll be impacted by this is Manor College, which is right in my backyard. So I do want to know specifically, how will this impact Manor? If this goes through, if this gets approved, then how will this impact Manor? What will that enable them to do at Manor and how will that impact our area here? Manor's a different, is a different story than Penn State because there's not a lot of parking over there now. There's, they put up a major building, we're going to have a major problem over here. So I just, you guys need to be mindful, you're not just making this change for Penn State, you're making it for Manor also. And if there was a way of separating the two, where one property could be zoned, E eighteen, you know, if you're inclined to approve this, and personally, it doesn't look like it's, I, I'm not opposed to Penn State building this building. It looks like, you know, it looks like everything should be okay over there. If the neighbors are good with it, you know, I wouldn't make a big issue of it. But I do want to make an issue of changing the impervious surface and changing the green space percentages when they don't need to be changed per Penn State's engineer. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Tobin. Our next participant, Ashley?
Marian, your microphone has been unmuted.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Maranor Pola. I am also a student at Penn State Abington, majoring in computer science, and I live on one thousand one Old York Road or Lions Gate. I support this effort going forward because, as you all know, Penn State Abington is one of the largest universities and one of the top universities in the world, yet it is upsetting that we have the lowest average square footage per student among all of the nineteen Commonwealth campuses, with the average being one hundred and thirty-four square feet versus the seventy-two square feet that we have. Although every inch on the campus is optimized, I can advocate for how cramped it is because I witnessed faculty sharing offices, some of the classrooms are shared, and some are even converted closets, as mentioned earlier. Some students have to even go off-campus for office hours, which is not easily accessible to those without cars like me. And not to mention, there are no spaces for students' personal growth such as non-denominational prayer rooms, study spaces, recreational areas, et cetera. As the Abington campus grows, this issue will enlarge and it is crucial for us students to have the space where we can comfortably learn and enrich our academic growth without having the worry to, of having the worry of not having the space to do so. As mentioned again, Penn State Abington does an amazing job at optimizing space, ensuring the community is welcomed and maintain the area so that it is clean and presented in the best way possible. Examples including the duck pond, the public art exhibits, and the buildings themselves. As such, Penn State Abington is an asset to this community and this academic building is a matter of need and not a want for more than four thousand students and faculty who are all community members of the Abington Township. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your comments. Next one, Ashley?
Joseph Hanlon, your microphone has been unmuted.
Oh, thank you. Hi, I'm Joe, Joe Handham, one thousand one Old York Road, two hundred and sixteen Lions Gate Apartments. I'm a third-year English major. I run a major club on campus, the Abington Review. I'm also a resident of this near Lions Gate. I have a lot of love for this community that we have, but, you know, not just here, but the Abington campus too. You know, they really deserve this new building because this can give our professors a chance to really get this individual office space, which is incredibly important to the process of our studies due to the vital office hours we get from these professors. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your comments. Ashley?
Joan Pouch, your microphone has been unmuted.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Oh, yes, Mrs. Pouch, we can, we can. Go right ahead.
Thank you. My name is Joan Pouch and I live at seventeen forty-eight Woodland Road. And the reason I'm asking today, and I asked Commissioner Hecker to have this vote delayed today, is my primary concern is traffic and, and the parking. I do have to stay from the beginning, hopefully, and the students are still listening. My hus, and I'm glad people from main campus are here. My husband is, is a member of the Pioneer Club. We have lived in this house for forty-five years since we were married. The reason we're in this house is because my husband walked past it when he was walking to Ogon's campus. I was proposed to on the steps of Old Bay, so we are part of the story. I don't believe any of the residents are against education or wanting you to have the best space available. The problem being, there is, the campus has a limited amount of acreage, but the reason I'm concerned about the traffic is because of your security. I actually had to call Chief Ossenbach today because I was completely appalled by a Penn State van not completely negotiating the four-way stop sign at Woodland and Huntington, but also the rate of speed that that van was going. We have, we live, Woodland Road is a two-lane highway, which has, in the last, past forty-five years, been a major access route for students for north and south on Six-Eleven and north and south on Huntington Road. It's two lanes and the speeds picked up had been way beyond the speed limit. My husband is going to be seventy-eight. He religiously kills himself during snowstorms to make sure the sidewalk is shoveled for the students. So please, in any respect, we are not against the students or the school as such, and we applaud all that you've gained. However, we are concerned because the two-lane highway has a lot of foliage dropping in the fall and is probably more dangerous than, than any other time of year because of the wet leaves. We are concerned about safety of the students walking down. Neighbors have called repeatedly to the police department with the rates of speed of the students going and coming from campus. The other situation.
Mrs. Pouch, I'm sorry, I apologize, but your, your time has expired and we, we do have a lot of other folks to get to, but thank you for, for sharing your comments and making your points. Ashley?
Ashlyn Cabera, your microphone has been unmuted.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go right ahead.
Hi. Hello, everyone. My name is Ocean Cabera and I am a first-year student at Penn State Abington, living in Lions Gate, which is one hun, one thousand one Old York Road. When I was first approached with this opportunity, the only thing I thought about was why would anyone disapprove of such an important and necessary addition to the campus? Then I looked at the residents around the school, families, children, dogs running on fresh-milled grass, and most importantly, the landscape. Penn State Abington is the most nature-oriented campus of the Penn State family, and that is mostly due to the higher-ups meeting together and deciding that the campus should reflect the tranquility established by the surrounding residents, as well as meeting with the residents to make sure that their goal is achieved. Penn State Abington is only thirty-two feet. The average footage for colleges is one hundred and thirty-four square feet, but I want you to think about something more important than just square footage. We currently have music major students playing in closets and art classes, which I am also attending, cut in half just to keep certain subjects going and certain people employed, and students having three to, three to five classes in the same classrooms every single day. This is more than just landscaping and what might happen to the profit of homes surrounding a campus and/or the inconveniences that some residents might find in a new building. This is about keeping students engaged in learning and giving them the space they need to pursue their interests. We, the students of Abington, need this new academic building to continue not only our education, but to grow as individuals as well. In addition, we constantly have incoming international students every semester. These students are willing to come to a different country to learn and grow with Abington, not to mention the opportunity of an exchange of culture and opening of job opportunities these students represent to the Abington community. We owe it to them to do better. We owe it to them to have more classrooms for their ideas. We owe it to them to have better laboratories for them to work in. We owe it to them to build a better environment when they are ready so far away from home. Help us make this possible. Penn State Abington only wants the best for its students, and I'm sure you do as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. I believe we have three, three more folks, two more folks? Oh, one more, okay, go.
Ms. Lehman, your microphone is unmuted.
Hi, Laura Lehman. And the thing that I'd like to mention first is the, about the small meetings that Commissioner Hecker held on, on these items. When, when we have a lot of people interested in an issue like this, we need to hold the meetings so that everyone can hear. Mr. Tobin was on, I, I don't think he could, he could tell you, but I'm pretty sure Manor didn't hold any meetings on this. So the neighbors were not made aware of what the consequences were to Manor College and nobody seemed to care. And Commissioner Hecker and Commissioner Rothman both had an obligation to do that. So, and, and for the students, I, I, we so totally are supporting you and all the wonderful things that you're, you know, involved in and that your, your goals are, but you have to understand that you packed a college into a small neighborhood here and that at some point, after this building is built, you still will outgrow it unless Penn State begins to think that some of their classes, perhaps music, are going to be a shuttle bus away to another place. And the shuttle buses going through the neighborhoods, as you've already heard, are an issue for many people. And it's important for you because you're going to be homeowners and retirees someday to understand that aspect of this. Eventually, you will outgrow what you have, what you expand to. So at what point do you do that? After everybody is uncomfortable with each other? So, and I, and I want to say about the impervious surfaces, I'm glad for Kathy's comments and that and the other comments on that. We, you have a different situation that you can't compare to other impervious surfaces. You're all on a slope. So while your green space, I'm, I'm talking about green space here too, that while your green space counts the sloped area, what happens is the water quickly runs off of that and you do have neighbors at the bottom of the hill that are flooding. So it should not be increased and I, I certainly hope that you will consider keeping that what it is and doing what Mr. Tobin suggested, going for a variance for the point-two on your building. But we need that all over this township. We need to keep the green space and so on. But I'm mostly concerned about the way the meetings were held, how answers were not achieved. There's, nobody should not have an answer to a question at this point, and that shows just an unwillingness.
Ms. Lehman, your, your time has expired. Thank you very much for sharing your comments. Ashley, you're saying there's one more?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, there's one more person on Zoom and then with my, my thanks for the patience of the folks in the room, we're going to get with you next, we'll get to you next. With one more Zoom caller, please.
Jeanette De Mayo, your microphone has been unmuted.
Okay, thank you. Jeanette De Mayo, seven one seven Morton Road. I agree with both Mike Tobin and Lori Lehman in regard to the zoning. I, I, I think it should be done on a case-by-case basis and also, you know, we are going in the wrong direction, okay? We need to preserve our permeable surfaces, not decrease them. We are causing ourselves so much trouble down the road that is going to hurt us. You know. Uh, you know, not only with neighbors having to deal with flooding issues. And, and also, it was mentioned, I think, at the Toll Brothers meeting for uh, St. Basil's. That um, they, you know, once everything is sold, the homeowners association would then take over. You know, look at the homeowners association down in Florida where that condo collapsed, okay? Homeowners, homeowners associations are not going to have the money or the will to fix major flooding problems. It's, it's, it's a mess. We need to preserve our permeable surfaces. We can't keep doing this. It's, it's ecologically, it's bad. And it's, we'll end up hurting our roads, crumbling roads because of water damage. I mean, we're just at the beginnings of this, and we need to stop building real estate this way. Thank you.
Uh, thank you very much, Ms. De Mayo. All right, so Ashley, we are done with the, the folks from Zoom. Now, again, thank you for your patience. We'd uh, like to hear from the folks who are here uh, in person to comment regarding Penn State.
Good evening, my name is Karen White-
Ms. Jones, I live at one, two thirty-five Roberts Avenue. I'm a resident and a taxpayer. I'm also an employee at Penn State Abington. But I come to you to- tonight, um, because I've worked there for four years. And I have seen how my colleagues have worked in good faith on this project. I just want to say, I think it's the responsibility of citizens to educate themselves about the process. And not the responsibility of all of the commissioners, um, as some of previous comment, commentators have asserted. I think an investment in Penn State Abington is an investment in Abington Township and its people and residents. Higher education is a community good, and that's fundamentally what we're talking about tonight. And it's beautiful facilities of Penn State Abington is a point of pride for this township. It also sustains a high-quality Penn State education. And many of the Abington Town, Abington High School students who attend our college. Appreciate and will benefit from this investment. Penn State Abington, which has been mentioned, is a significant contributor to the local economy. We pay real estate taxes. And we're a good neighbor. And I believe my colleagues have operated and, and conducted themselves in good faith for many, many years. And I urge you to approve the zoning amendment this evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comment.
Good evening, I'm uh, Brian Bamberger, I live at nine-four-seven Frog Hollow. Uh, I'm also Vice President of the Riddle Meadowbrook Civic Association, and I'm their liaison with Penn State. Uh, so I've been involved in this project since uh, some of the earlier uh, days, the earliest meetings. First, I want to commend uh, Penn State on their openness, on making changes uh, to support the local residents and their concerns. Uh, others have spoken about the need for the new building. Our concern is about fitting the building into the community. The Commissioner Hecker, when he joined the process, when he became a commissioner. Uh, has worked to bring the residents, the local residents from the, the streets, surrounding streets, together with Penn State to resolve issues. To date, there seems to be still some issues, uh, like the impervious surface issues that need to be addressed. We think that they can be addressed in some minor changes to the proposed ordinance, subsequent land development planning. And uh, other approvals as they're needed for the construction, as they're moving forward. We're confident that the new chancellor has continued her dedication or has dedication to resolving issues. Uh, with the local community and their concerns through the full development process as it moves forward. And we support the ordinance with the adjustments to address the concerns of the immediate neighbors. And the Civic Association offers its help to help address the issues of those local residents. Thank you.
Thank you so much to you and the Civic Association for your comments. Next, uh, any other uh, comments from folks here in the room?
Hi, Douglas Nadel, sixteen forty-eight Cloverly. Uh, beginning of tonight's presentation, we heard from multiple residents who had problems with stormwater issues and flooding. And now Mr. Jonas shows us a presentation asking us to increase impermeable surface from forty to forty-five percent. I believe this is completely unacceptable. Uh, Commissioner Hecker has told me there is another proposal to keep the limit at forty percent, but to round to the nearest number. Thus allowing Penn State's forty-point-two percent. Uh, I think this is also a mistake, allowing you to round to the nearest number effectively increases the limit to forty-point-five percent. And for a property the size of Penn State's, that's an additional ten thousand square feet of impervious surface. That's more soil erosion, flooding, pollution, uh, means ten thousand square feet less of green space. So, uh, if their proposal is slightly over forty percent, they need to remove that additional impervious surface, just like everybody else in the township. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments.
Hello, my name is uh, Matt Ran, I live at eighteen nineteen Kimball Avenue in Ward Eight. I also work at Penn State Abington. And uh, that is why I'm, I'm aware of tonight's agenda, but not why I support, uh, support tonight's proposal. I support voting yes because I support education. I support Penn State because I support Abington Township. As the bumper sticker says, I am proud to be in Abington. I'm proud because Abington is one of the best school districts in the state, home to one of the best hospitals in the state. And lucky enough to be partnered with one of the best universities in the country. Please vote yes tonight. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing your comments. Uh, I'm not sure I recognize it. Name and address for the record, please, uh-
Good evening, Commissioner Stephen Klein, nine forty Washington Lane, Riddle, Pennsylvania. Uh, former commissioner, and I bring up my comments. Um, this, Mr. Janus had mentioned this in his presentation. This is exactly what was expected when we did the zoning ordinance back in two thousand seventeen. Um, the zoning ordinance committee contemplated changes to the ordinance related to the two campuses, Manor and Penn State. We also considered changes to the two hospital campuses, Holy Redeemer and Abington. Both, when we, when we discussed these, we realized that us getting involved without the stakeholders being intimately involved with the changes. Was, was foolhardy for us to get involved in, and we realized that most of that would happen. At a, at certain time in the future when these campuses would need assistance in zoning and expansion of their properties. So what Penn State is doing today is exactly what was expected. Um, we were looking, I, I am a full supporter of their proposal. I worked with them early on, and Commissioner Hecker has taken over when he became commissioner and has, and from what I understand and my conversations with him. Has been very open to conversations with the neighbors. The forty-five percent is exactly what's needed for this property. And it should also be mentioned that most of the campus, and most of the houses for that matter, have absolutely no stormwater management. Facilities on those properties. This property, whatever impervious covers are going to do. Will be subject to all of the stormwater management ordinances that the township has, which will pick up a hundred percent of their stormwater and discharge it back into the ground. Which is not what you're seeing in any, most of the campus, and also in any of the houses in and around that area. I, I support this, I support this proposal. I think it's um, right for the campus to uh, provide the facilities that are necessary. To maintain the current, uh, the current population of the school. This is what they're trying to do. They're not looking for the expansion of, of population. They're looking to provide the need, the needed space to create a, a, an education. Um, an educational uh, climate for the current student body. So I hope that the commissioners um, will look favorably upon this and vote for it. Thank you.
Thank you kindly, Mr. Klein. Uh, is, any, anyone else here to uh, make a comment in person regarding Penn State? All right, again, thank you everyone for your patience throughout the public comment period. I'm gonna open this up to uh, questions or comments. We're gonna start with commissioners who are present. Commissioner Brodsky.
Thank you, Commissioner Spiegelman. So I just want to make two comments, just observations, if you will. Number one, very interesting to hear comments from Commissioner, well, former Commissioner Klein. Uh, and his insight and opportunity to discuss what was happening when the initial parts of this, the ordinances were developed at this point. And I would just note that that's a unique opportunity to have somebody involved who actually gave you a little bit of insight to legislative intent, if you will. With respect to why we are where we are today, with respect to the current zoning ordinances and the various statutes and ordinances to go there. So I appreciate Commissioner, well, former Commissioner Klein coming out to voice his concerns and his support. Number two, I would also wanna, would like to note that I appreciate, I'm not sure all are really aware of how much time, effort, and hard work. Commissioner Hecker, Vice President Hecker has put into this particular effort, and he has. And he, because every time we've spoken over the last several weeks, this topic always would seem to come up in one way or another. And I'm aware of the amount of time and effort he put into this, and I do believe that his insight and his opinions in this are to be well-considered and reasoned. And I believe that they're supported by what's before us at this point. So I'm good with going with what Commissioner Hecker, Vice President Hecker had to say on this one, because I believe his opinion is to be well-considered and reasoned. So I'm good with it, is what I'm suggesting, and I want to appreciate the fact that Commissioner, Vice President Hecker, put the time and effort into, to do this. It's unique to see that level and depth of what he did, so we're good with it. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Brodsky. Um, any other uh, questions or comments from commissioners who are here in the room? Uh, Commissioner Weinberg, and then, uh, then of course, we can turn to Vice President Hecker, and then we'll hear from the folks on Zoom.
Thank you, President Spiegelman. Uh, I appreciate that this has been thoroughly vetted by the neighbors, township staff. Um, and, and, and the Planning Commission. Uh, but I do have one question about the tax amendment itself that I haven't heard any comments on. Which is, uh, there's been a lot of uh, comments about traffic and, and such. In the ordinance twenty-one eighty-six, C, I'm sorry, number seven, C. And it talks, uh, excuse me, E, it talks about a traffic study. Okay, and that traffic study, it talks about, um, a traffic study would be required if it generates an average of three thousand trips per day and other criteria. I guess my, what I don't like is I, I don't like discretion from township staff being taken away from them. And if it's decided by township staff that the traffic impact study should be done, I'd like to see it done. So I guess the question is, is this a, is this a floor? Is this something that has to, has to be met in order to get a traffic impact study? Do, does somebody have to say, oh, it's, it's only gonna be twenty-nine hundred, therefore, we don't need a traffic impact study?
My, my understanding is that, and, and-
Again.
Uh, Pete Spizak, Traffic Planning and Design. I, I believe the way, well, so first of all, those numbers that, that the ordinance references. They're from the, both, the township engineer, traffic engineer, and they are generally what PennDOT would require for. Uh, you know, to provide for a traffic study. Um, I believe there is something, there's additional, so what PennDOT has, PennDOT has a three thousand trip threshold per day. Or a hundred directional trips per hour. That's what their thresholds are. And I believe there's two other thresholds in, in the tax amendment. I don't have it, I don't remember exactly what they are. That are lower criteria than that.
Okay, there's actually, there's actually five criteria?
Yes.
Again, I don't know, I don't know the way, way this works. Is there a threshold? I just don't like personally, I don't like township staff discretion, township staff being taken away from them if they believe a traffic impact study is, is, is important. Along with the residents, so, again, is this a, is it, is it a floor threshold? Is it something that if it's ever questioned, you'll defer to the township to allow the traffic impact study, to require ta- traffic impact study?
I mean, I, I don't see why that wouldn't be the case. I mean, in fact, I believe PennDOT's, PennDOT's own requirements say, you know, yes, these are the thresholds for a traffic study. But they can always require you to basically study a problem intersection that's right near your development. Or, you know, just your site driveway to make sure that your site driveway would operate properly without, you know, the need for turn lanes or, or traffic signal or something like that. So there's always discretion by either the township or, you know, whatever, whatever entity you're gonna be going towards to, you know, provide for a traffic study.
Sister Clark, I'm sorry, I apologize, Commissioner Weinberg, Sister Clark looks like he-
I think we just have to make sure we're reading this correctly. The traffic study is required for a new building or other improvements which meet any of these standards. And I think we're talking about defined standards. It's not simply a matter of Penn State saying, eh, it's only gonna be twenty-five hundred a day. There are defined standards that our traffic engineer will review and then determine whether or not there needs to be a, a traffic study.
Yeah, exactly.
So there is no, there's no way, it's not taking away our discretion. It is simply saying, here is the standards, it's the standard setup, I don't know, probably even the IP and by PennDOT. And our traffic engineer will say, based on the square footage, based on the usage, it's going to, we believe it's gonna generate more than three thousand trips a day. Therefore, it has to, uh, that you have to submit a traffic study.
Right, and, and actually, number four, or E four under here, talks about it generates an increase in peak hour traffic. Greater than five percent of the existing volume in the surrounding residential community. So basically, if you, you know, if you look at any residential street, say it has a hundred trips in an hour. If you generate five trips, you have to, you, you have to provide a traffic study. So, you know, you're, you're pretty much, I mean, nothing generates just five trips. Anything new would not just generate five, but you know, you know what I'm saying? So at the end of the day, there's, there's definitely um, some wiggle room in there for the township to require a traffic study.
Okay, I appreciate that. It was just a, it was a concern of mine. Mr. Jonas?
Just want to say that, Mr. Clark can correct me, but my recollection is those standards came from township consultants. They were, they were, that was one of the many revisions.
Correct.
Added by the township consultants, uh, to which Penn State absolutely agreed.
Okay, I, okay, I, I appreciate that. Um, you know, in terms of parking and, and traffic, uh, I've heard complaints in the past from Ward Seven residents. Because Lionsgate's in Ward Seven, um, there's parking by the turf field, uh, by Penn State Abington and Huntington Road. So I would ask, uh, the chancellor, and I appreciate you, all that you've done to, to really do your best. Um, try to find additional parking. The less students that drive onto that campus, uh, the less problems, uh, there, there are going to be for the, for the neighbors.
I think we can agree more, um.
It's a strange thing for me to say, but traffic and parking keep me up at night. Um, that is the thing that at two o'clock in the morning makes me not be able to get back to sleep. We are really diligently working. I've, I've had discussions with Commissioner Hecker. I've, uh, we have contacted local realtors to identify, I've asked for a thousand spaces, but I'll take six hundred. So we're, we're, we're looking to find space off-campus, um, so that we're able to continue. And I will say, the um, the implementation of the permit this first semester. Has really significantly decreased the number of cars we have on campus. Um, we're doing, you know, constant counting, hand counting, we're sending people out to count. Um, it's the, it's the first semester this is implemented, so we continue to find spaces. And I, I want to work with the township to identify the space and to get more of our cars off-campus. And that goes for staff as well, not just students, but students and staff. And, you know, bring them into the campus.
Thank you, Chancellor, and I, and I appreciate all you've done. I, I believe that you, you and Penn State have tried to be a partner in this. And I appreciate that all you've done and all the accommodations you have made, um, with, with Commissioner Hecker.
Thank you.
To try to get this somewhere that, that we can vote on and approve. And I would, I would approve this uh, agenda item. So thank you.
Thank you, and we will continue that partnership. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioner Weinberg, and thank you for bringing up the parking issue, because as you know, uh, it, it's definitely affected from Lionsgate. Uh, Ward Eleven as well, especially Old Orchard Road, so many thanks for bringing that up. Um, we're gonna turn to Vice President Hecker now, and then we're gonna go to, I know Commissioner Rothman has had his hand up from Zoom, so Vice President Hecker, take it away.
Thank you, President Spiegelman, and uh, I appreciate everyone that has come out this evening, both here in person and on Zoom to express your perspective. Um, this is a challenging circumstance when we're talking about implementing change in a community. That has the potential to impact nearest neighbors, which is why when I entered the scene two years ago, uh, taking over for Commissioner Klein. Connected with the nearest residents to understand what their primary concerns were. And over the last two years, we've worked to address those, recognizing that we're not gonna address, we may not be able to address every concern that every individual has. Because some of them aren't relevant for this part of the process, some of them are relevant to, um, you know, the land development process, if and when we get to that. development process, if and when we get to that. But I, I agree with what Brian Bamberger said earlier this evening from the Riddle Metro Civic Association, that this would continue to be a partnership between the township, Penn State Abington, and the community to ensure that the final product is something that the community can be proud of and will be a benefit to Penn State, which educates many of the children here from Abington Township. So I wanted to just address the four major things that we've worked on over the course of time. The first one actually being, the original proposal also included an amendment language to rezone two properties across the street on Cloverly Lane, which I understood from the residents was, was a major nonstarter. And so I had conversations with Penn State Abington and the chancellor, and they agreed to remove that from the proposal. So that was, that was taken out of the proposal. Early on, there were concerns about how trash would be stored at the building, because there was a change in language that would have made this visible from the street, as opposed to being contained within the structure as it currently is required in E14. And we were able to secure agreement for that to happen. There was discussion at last week's neighbor meeting about the high intensity buffers and concern about the options that Penn State has in choosing those high intensity buffers, because one of those options includes fencing. And we have secured a commitment from Penn State that they will not, in fact, use fencing as the high intensity buffer. It will be shrubbery that is consistent with the remainder of the neighborhood. Unfortunately, I want to be clear with everyone here, the residents who are participating on Zoom, we've heard the concerns about the impervious surface coverage. And I actually agree with them. And I'm going to ask Solicitor Clark or our planner, Mike Narkovich, to explain the language that we're going to introduce into this text amendment before we take a vote, that will work to address most of those concerns. There were two changes. There was that, and then there was the issue about the 30 calendar days notification that we, I think we should be clear about before we take a vote.
I believe Mr. Narkovich is going to go over those, those changes with the board. And you are correct, it is dealing with the issue related to the impervious surface and also related to the notification if there are going to be events on the property.
Yes. Thank you, Solicitor. So the proposed-
Oh, I apologize. Mike, could you, since we are in a public hearing, if you could just identify yourself so folks know you're here.
Yes, I'm sorry. My name is Mike Narkovich, and I am Abington's planning consultant from Montgomery County Planning Commission.
Thanks, Mike.
You're welcome. So the proposed changes include having a ceiling on impervious coverage of 40%, rounded to the nearest whole number. And likewise, the minimum green area would be boosted to 60%.
Rounded to the nearest whole number.
Yes.
Also rounded to the nearest whole number?
Also rounded, yes. And then regarding the language about notification, that is, I can read that to you. Okay. Sorry. Okay, here we go. The township's approval, here we go. Additionally, organized activities such as graduation ceremonies or camp activities will require administrative review and approval by the township. The township's approval shall not be unreasonably withheld. The township shall have 20 business days for the receipt of the request for its review. Such requests shall be submitted by hand delivery or first-class regular mail to the manager's office. If the township does not respond within that time period, the request will be considered And then, I was also asked to just talk about some of the changes. Did you want to go back and to your dialogue at this point, or do you want me to go on and talk about manor?
I think we go on and talk about manor.
Yeah, I think that would, this would be a good time to get that on the table and clarified for everyone.
Okay, good. So with Manor College, you know, Mr. Jonas did summarize a lot of the changes that this ordinance would include. He showed a chart. And so I just wanted to go back over that and just go over maybe in more detail some of the changes that might be most of interest. So the maximum height is increased in the proposed text amendment from 45 feet to 55 feet, only when meeting numerous provisions, including 100-foot setback, high intensity buffer used along residential district boundaries, the provision of renderings and elevations of each new building facade visible from the street as viewed from the street, required to determine compliance. And development of at least 30,000 square feet of new floor area or outdoor activity area of at least two acres is no longer required to be approved by conditional use. In the, in existing use regulations for school and campus, that's the standard. Master facilities plan had been, or is required for new buildings of at least 50,000 square feet. Now, the proposal is that there, that would, a master facilities plan would be required when at least two buildings of at least 80,000 square feet are proposed, unless a plan has been submitted within the past three years. And those buildings do not include accessory buildings. It's only non-accessory buildings that it applies to. Buildings would no longer have to be set back 300 feet from residential uses. Before, or in the existing code, buildings other than storage or utility buildings are required to be set back 300 feet from residential uses.
Oh, God.
And then there's the requirements for the traffic study, which we just went over. So those were all added. Currently, there's, there are no requirements for traffic study in the code. Requirements for parking lot landscaping, the landscaping chapter of zoning would no longer apply related to requirements for planting islands and planting strips. The 12-foot buffer would be permitted for new vehicle parking located within the yard along a public street and within a screening buffer. So that's rather than 15 feet. So you have a slight narrowing of the required buffer. At the same time, it would mitigate that narrowing by requiring a denser buffer. So providing 20% more evergreen shrubs and applicable evergreen trees that would otherwise be required by the landscaping chapter. Parking lots would not have to be interconnected in zoning's parking and transportation chapter. This is required unless buildings, water bodies, or steep slopes prevent it. And in the community service district, currently, there's a requirement that parking not be permitted in the required front yard. So that would be superseded by the proposed university campus regulations. In no case shall a new building, currently, currently, no building may exceed 320 feet in length. The proposal is to reduce that to no building exceeding 300 feet in length, rather than 320 feet. So it's making the requirement stronger. Loading berths, the proposal is for one per 20,000 square feet of new building area. Currently, the requirement is one per 20,000 plus one for each additional 20,000 or fraction thereof, if determined necessary by the Board of Commissioners. There was, there is a proposed adjustment supplemental language, I would add, regarding disturbance of steep slopes. So in addition to having the requirements of the steep slope conservation district in the zoning ordinance apply, excavation in or disturbance of steep slope areas within the steep slope conservation districts, should we utilize engineered slope stabilization, retaining walls, and/or foundation walls? In the proposal, parking spaces can be nine by 18, which is standard, generally, and, you know, as a planner, we, we think that's fine. The existing SADO does require 10 by 20-foot spaces. And Mr. Jonas went over the updates to the parking formula. So it's requiring slightly less parking. The difference, I think, believe the only difference is that rather than require as part of the formula one space for every two students, it's one for every two and a half students. And then there's another provision for a reduction of up to 30% if certain provisions are met. And that includes the university providing and making available all of, all of the following. A regularly scheduled shuttle service, which will include service to a commuter rail station, a ride-share program, and to the extent such programs are readily available, car share and bike share services. And I would note that at Lionsgate, the university has done, you know, multiple strategies to address issues such as that. And those were what I consider to be the more significant changes.
Mike, thank you, thank you very much. That's, that is much appreciated. And actually, you know, since you were addressing manor, it's perfect time to take a comment from Commissioner Rothman, who's been waiting patiently with his hand up.
I finally figured out how to use that raise the hand function, so I'm very proud of myself.
And also your blur the background function is, is working very nicely, too.
It is on point. Thank you for that as well. So, so Mike, I have some questions and one or two concerns. If we look at that residential change from 300-foot setback to 100-foot, the, the only property that I see that, that is impacted in Ward Three that may reach, and I'm using Google Maps to look at this, there's a home on the corner there of Douglas Avenue. And then we, we have the Manor Woods property. And in the back corner, behind the, the church facility at the Sisters of St. Basil's property, next to Manor College, it goes all the way back. And I'm just wondering if, I mean, I don't know if it would be practical for, for there to be a residential, for there to be a building back there. But do we know, does anyone know even from township, the distance between that home and where the property starts, where, where manor's cut off there? I don't know. Mike, I don't think that's something you might know offhand. I don't know if we have staff that, that might know that.
I mean, just looking at, I mean, so I just pulled up Google Maps myself, and I think it's, I, yeah. So I'm, I'm not certain, but I'm fairly sure that that is not on their property, and that's in the Manor Woods property. Not to mention protected by environmental conservation measures, because there's riparian corridor there, there's, you know, the floodplain conservation district and so forth.
It looks like it would be more than 300 feet to me anyway, let alone 100 feet, for sure. Okay, as long as we agree on that. My, my next question is, and some of the residents I spoke with over the course of the past week, I did put out some, some information regarding the Penn State situation, knowing that Manor College is a hot topic right now with the St. Basil's property being, being discussed quite regularly. The, the comments that were made earlier as to the 40%, and I know that the existing use had 102% added up there, so, so we're rounding from 40 to 60. Is the proposed text that we're looking at going to read 40.2 and 59.8 for that? Or is it, could you please explain how that's going to read?
Sure. It's, it's, so it would be the maximum impervious coverage shall be 40%, comma, rounded to the nearest whole number. So in that case, if there is a submission for 40.2, it'd be rounded down to 40. If it was 40.5 or higher, it would be rounded up to 41%. And it would be considered over the maximum.
Okay. And then, so, so to clarify a question that I received, that wouldn't allow someone to say that they want 41.5% and round it up to 42. It's, it's basically saying that this is 40%. The most you could really do is 40.4.
Exactly.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure that that was clear. And the same would go for the minimum green area approach?
Right. So the minimum green area shall be 60%. And again, that would be rounded to the nearest whole number.
This is one, possibly one last question. If, if Manor College, there's, there's word that Manor College may be, or may have entered into some sort of agreement with the Sisters of St. Basil for, whether it be called future development or, or maintenance of the property or whatever, at the horse farm there. If, if there were ever to be a request for Manor College to build another building on that farm property, right, that would have to comply with all of the existing use. And if we voted in favor of this, would have to go with the second column that was shown on that, that graphic earlier, which would be the new E18 universe. But as you described, there's not really that much that would be changing from this because of that impervious coverage and the minimum green area, correct? Except for the, I think you said there's 10 feet higher on the building if they meet various, you know, parameters.
Right. Right. I mean, they could, exactly. There would be slightly less parking required. Yeah, the building, you know, they could, they could build a building up to 55 feet rather than 45 feet if it met numerous requirements and was set back. So, so yes, you're right.
Is it fair to say that, that this doesn't seem to be quite a dras, quite, quite such a drastic change as would impact Manor College? It's more of an accommodation for us to let Penn State do what they need to do, and not something that would, you know, alarm you if you were someone that was in the area over by Manor College? Because that's how I, is that it's not alarming.
Yes. Yes. I, I don't consider it to be a problem as it affects Manor College. I don't, I don't see, and, and I would, I would be a little surprised if, you know, if, if Manor College or the neighbors to Manor College, you know, once, once they were familiar with all the details, would really have any concern with it.
That's my take, too. I appreciate the community allowing Mike and I to have a public discourse back and forth. And I think we should let some other people talk now. But thank you very much. And thank you very, very much to Commissioner Hecker for working with me on all the questions I've had over the past few months. You know, when the residents care, we want to, we want to do our best to answer all their questions. I appreciate everybody doing that.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Rothman. And thank you again to Mike Narkovich, always, for, for your, your wise, wise consultation. Do we have any other, any other hand raised, hands raised from commissioners at home?
Yes.
Oh, Commissioner Zappone?
Okay. I, I just want to commend Commissioner Hecker for having several meetings with his residents and also the staff at Penn State, and getting everybody together and kind of find out what their issues are, and diligently working on those issues. So thank you, Commissioner Hecker.
Thank you, Commissioner Zappone.
Yes, thank you for your comment, Commissioner Zappone. Do we have anybody else, any other commissioners who are joining us on Zoom? All right, with that, I'm going to indulge for just fifteen-
Commissioner Bull raised his hand.
Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner Bull, I apologize.
Sorry, President Spiegelman. I know we're burning the midnight oil here, but I don't want to remain silent on this. I just want to express my enthusiastic support for this, for all of the reasons, including what Commissioners Zappone just, just mentioned. I think the process has been the right process that we look for in this sort of case. It's engaged a lot of stakeholders. I particularly want to thank Renesha, Patrice, Marion, Joe, and Oshlin for, for coming out tonight and stepping into the public forum and voicing their enthusiastic support for the project. There's nothing like hearing from stakeholders, like the students who are there, as well as the residents, asking some good faith questions. But I'm a, I'm a hard yes on this, and I appreciate all the work that's been done by both township staff, the Penn State community, and, and the neighbors to bring, the phrase, the phrase has been used a lot already, but this good faith, good faith effort to, to this point. I'm looking forward to a vote tonight.
Thank you, Commissioner Bull, and very well said. Do we have any other comments from commissioners who are participating via Zoom? We don't. And I just, I do want to very, you know, briefly, but, but earnestly acknowledge the tremendous amount of work that my friend and colleague, Commissioner Hecker, has put into this. This is a complicated situation, often contentious, and bringing so many different sides with often, you know, widely contrasting views on things together for, as Commissioner Bull aptly put, good faith conversations. I also do want to acknowledge the work that was done on this for years before by former Commissioner Klein, setting, setting this up. And this is, again, this was a multi-commissioner, multi-year process, because it, because it was, you know, was that, that multi, multi-chancellor, yes. And I know, you know, Commissioner Klein's work really set things up for Commissioner Hecker and also set up the, you know, the, these, you know, these, this attitude of partnership- and also set up the, you know, the, these, you know, these, this attitude of partnership moving forward on this. So with that, if there are no more commissioner comments, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. Unless, Sister Clark, if you have something.
Unless there are any further, I am looking further unless there are further questions for the chancellor or, or.
All right.
Or her staff.
All right. The public hearing is closed. And now, all that remains is to vote on the matter at hand. Do we need, oh. Well, yes, this will definitely be a roll call vote. Commissioner Hecker, is there anything else? I mean, you get, you get last word on this before we vote.
I'm good.
Okay. All right. On, on ordinance 2186, we are going to have a roll call vote, please. And that can commence whenever we're ready. We're going to do the roll call vote.
Commissioner Brodsky?
Yes.
Commissioner Bull?
Yes.
Commissioner Carswell?
Yes.
Commissioner Rothman?
Yes.
Commissioner Vaughn? Commissioner Vaughn?
Yes. Sorry, I put in unmute. Yes.
Commissioner Vehi?
Yes.
Commissioner Weinberg?
Yes.
Commissioner Diplosito?
Yes.
Commissioner Myers?
Yes.
Commissioner Zappone?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowman?
Yes.
Vice President Hecker?
Yes.
President Spiegelman?
Yes.
And Commissioner Thompson and Commissioner Schreiber have abstained.
All right. The motion carries. Thank you all very much for your time. And now we're going to move on to the rest of our agenda. And hopefully, hopefully, we can get through this without the need for another break. But if we need one, we'll take it. We're certainly going, for those who are staying, we're going to take a, we are going to have a nice little recess before the committee of the whole meeting.
If everyone could remain seated, we're not done yet. We have a second ordinance, which is 2187, which is the Mass Amendment. And I would suggest that based on the vote that we just had, that a, a voice, a, a voice vote may be, may be appropriate here.
My sincere apologies, clearly, the, the, the long, the long day and month and season year getting to me as well. All right. So we're going to go, I, I don't think we have, we need to entertain any additional comment regarding ordinance 2187. So on ordinance 2187, we are going to go ahead and we're going to just say, voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries, and 2187 joins 2186 in being adopted. Thank you. Thank you, Penn State. Thank you to all the residents. And now we will move on to new business. And for new business of the Board of Commissioners, we will call once again on Vice President Tom Hecker.
Thank you, President Spiegelman. This is a motion, BOC-01-111021. And this is a motion to adopt the fiscal year 2022 preliminary budget as the fiscal year 2022 proposed budget. And I so move.
Second. All right. It's been moved and seconded. Manager Manfredi, I'm going to hand things over to you before we open it up to any questions.
Thank you, President Spiegelman. As you know, eight days ago, on October 28th, the preliminary proposed budget was presented in detail and in length. We outlined every aspect of the budget. There was dialogue and discussion during that budget process. Most of it was surrounding the capital and the American Recovery, the American Rescue Plan Act. What Ms. McElvein is going to do, rather than to reiterate the presentation, we're going to make sure, because we're very concerned, as always, that people have the opportunity to view that presentation, to see the presentation that was presented that evening, and to know where to go, how to access it, especially since this is a new system, an online budget book, and there is much to learn. While we believe the videos that we have created online are, are fairly simple to follow, we also want to make sure that we point out to everyone where they can go to find this information. As you know, if the motion that has been seconded passes to convert this preliminary proposed budget into the proposed budget for consideration on December 9th for final adoption, what is adopted this evening will then become available for public inspection. So we want to make sure the public understands what is, is there for them, how to see it. And the other thing that is extremely important, you heard it all night long about answering questions, we have a email address that's been established. And we invite the public to submit questions, and more importantly in this case, at onlinebudgetbook@abbingtonpa.gov. If anyone has any questions that they would like to have answered, and they email to onlinebudgetbook@abbingtonpa.gov, our finance team will schedule time to answer their questions. If people are having difficulties in navigating the online budget book, we will certainly make sure we assist them. And of course, there is also the paper copy that someone can come in and view and, and see for themselves in, in the manager's office, technically township secretary's office. So with that, I'm just going to ask Ms. McElvein to show people where to go from the township's homepage to find this information and to see the presentation that was made with all of the details that were in it. And then I'm only going to talk very briefly about one or two items. And then Ms. Herman will talk about one or two items. And those items that we're going to be discussing are those things that were revised as a result of the discussions at the last meeting. Ms. McElvein?
Thank you, Manager Manfredi. Ashley McElvein. So here we see our homepage, www.abbingtonpa.gov. To access the budget, we do have, you know, a main header here where you can click, click here to view. But I encourage you to scroll down to news and pinned at the top, you'll see the FY 2022 Preliminary Proposed Online Budget Book. So you'll just simply click on the link here, and you'll be taken out to the Open Gov website where you can view our table of contents. This page right here is really the directory for all things budget. On this page, you'll be able to access a full-length video, which will describe some of the interactive tools which are accessible to residents to dive further in to the budget. And I do encourage everybody to please take the opportunity to watch that video so that you can fully engage with the budget book. But if you scroll down to get to the table of contents, on the left-hand side, you will see the message items, the narratives, and the presentation, which Manager Manfredi just spoke to, the Budget in Brief, which was the presentation given last month. In order to view the presentation, you can simply click here to watch it. Or you can go to the township's VBINT, our video webpage. And then on the right-hand side, we have the Budget by Funds, which is all of the information associated with the various budgets. And then additionally, if you scroll down to the bottom, you'll see we have instructional video and guides. Here, if you don't have the time to watch a full video, or perhaps something's escaping you in the moment, you can come here and watch a shorter clip on how to interact. And then we also have a PDF of instructional guides if you'd like to follow along with the video or if, if you want to come back to it and explore. And then also, you'll find here the email address that was provided, as well as a phone number if you have any questions. I would also like to note that if you want to go directly to this page, you can do so by visiting www.abbingtonpa.gov/2022budget. And that'll take you directly to this page, the Budget in Brief, which is the presentation. And again, you can access the video by clicking this link here found under the FY 2022 Budget Adoption Calendar. And if you have any questions, please don't hesitate to email or give us a call so that the finance department, I know, is eager to get everyone familiar with the system and is available to answer any questions.
Thank you. Would you put up the ARPA slide, please? American Recovery Plan Act.
Ashley, thank you very much for that presentation.
And of course, as, as was stated, not everyone is online. Not everyone will want to do the online budget book, which is why we're emphasizing that you can email. If you don't want to email, you can contact the township, ask for the finance department. The finance department, if anyone is interested, would be happy to schedule time. There is a lot of information. One of the things that is very clear by the hundreds of pages that we have of information is that we want to inform, we want to make sure everyone has as much information as they possibly can. And we want to help people understand all of that information. So if it is necessary to, to sit down with the team, they will make time between now and December 9th. Procedurally, if this is adopted this evening, tomorrow is a holiday, we will make sure that it is available. It has been available for 13 days, but any changes will also then be made available beginning on Friday for the, the period. So with that said, at the last meeting, the one area of discussion was on the American Recovery Plan Act. And it focused on where those dollars were going to be spent. And there were some concern about the amount of money that we were proposing. Excuse me. There was, can you zoom that? There was some concern about the amount of money that was being spent on parks and recreation, as well as everything else. And I know I said this before, I just want to reiterate it. The process we were following, as you recall, way back early on when we knew that this money was coming from, from the federal government, we procured the consulting services of a firm that has experience in this, the same firm that Montgomery County uses, so that we can make sure that everything that we are doing is vetted. And every item that you are seeing has been submitted by the directors that has been vetted for compliance with the act as to whether or not it is something that is eligible to be funded. So every dollar that is in this fund and in this proposal for capital is reducing the need for capital expenses. And I went through that at the last meeting, so I'm not going to waste your time this evening. I just want to draw your attention to those shaded and highlighted areas where we did make changes based on the comments that were received at the meeting last night and other comments that were made to me since that meeting. Very few changes were made to the general government with respect to the township building. I think everyone understood the difficulties we have here or the Community Development and Code Enforcement Division, Public Works, and refuse. It was primarily the culture recreation spending that was concerned. So in going back and looking at it, in trying to achieve where all of the dollars that we have currently sitting there were not expended, we tried to target, setting aside at least 1 million from what is sitting in the bank, so that we would have some flexibility should you next year want to do more than what that next tranche of money is going to allow. The thinking was really very simple. The Board of Commissioners have made since 2017, parks spending a priority. We have not been able to maintain the parks, especially in the last 18 months with all of the cuts that we've had. We've had cuts to, over the last few years, to make sure that taxes were, were kept as low as they possibly can be. And I'm going to show one slide to that before I conclude this brief presentation. But we can't do that any longer. Fortunately for us, we have this recovery money to help this economy that we have here in Abington and help bring people back. But parks has been an area that has been a source of concern to many commissioners, basketball courts, tennis courts, the condition of them, and the fact that we haven't been doing more to invest in them. This budget reflects that. These funds reflect that. What's also reflected in the revisions in, in some of the things that weren't approved and submitted to you on the 28th were additional changes so that the committee that this board, with the leadership of Commissioner Vehi, created for a close look at parks and recreation and how we should look at the future. For example, things that are in here, such as the sandblasting of, of two pools, perhaps Crestmont Pool and Pembrynn Pool. This, this Park Master Plan, which will be part of the comprehensive plan, which will be part of what gets studied by this committee, will make other determinations. So those dollars have been removed from consideration, and we went through a few more. One of the larger ones was the $500,000 allocation for lighting a soccer field. One of the thoughts behind that was the, the soccer field in Roslyn, the fields in Roslyn. Because those lights are so old, we've made repairs to them. But they're so old, it is difficult to get the necessary lighting and equipment. And of course, the, the need and the request that was made by the commissioner outside of that, that ward, you know, perhaps it would be Oliver Thorp Park would be a better location. The point is, that is not something that the commissioners have really looked at. And again, thinking forward, it made the most sense to reduce that amount of money so that that project can be thorough, more thoroughly vetted and the location more thoroughly determined. One of the things that we added back was the Manor Woods invasives, trails, parking, and fencing. When we're making these determinations as to what makes sense based on the goals and priorities of, of the board and of commissioners, that wasn't as high a priority as some of the others, but it was a high priority. So by eliminating the, the lighting of the soccer field, by reducing the amount of money from 1.1 to $735,000 for the inclusive park, which is still a significant amount of money. And I want to add to, while that was a reduction of several hundred thousand dollars in that project, we are, as we always do every day, pursuing grants. I, I can tell you that staff was on a three-hour call at DCNR about some of the new grants, and we're hoping that we can pursue that. I know some of the families that have been working on this project with Commissioners Vehi and Thompson for more than two years have, have tried to look at grants. And I think you heard a little bit of that this evening. So we're going to continue to look for other sources of money, not only for those projects, but for all projects. The other projects that we, we changed and eliminated, and I want to note, we're looking at 2023, not eliminating, are the, the golf renovations at Oliver Thorpe, the retaining wall at the pond at Oliver Thorpe, and then the waiting pool with the splash pad at Oliver Thorpe. So Oliver Thorpe, everyone knows what a great park it is. And we have 16 parks, I believe, it's still at 16. And we are working at every one to make every one of them better. But we need to be thoughtful about how we do that. So by pulling back some of this money to make sure that if next year you want to have that 1.1 million available on top of the next tranche of dollars coming, that you'll have that as flexibility. Those are the changes with respect to the capital budget. There were no other changes in the general fund. Ms. Herman is going to speak to one change that was made in, in the sewer fund. I also want to point out that this has been a process that has been going for 365 days. The priority in the ranking process began in earnest in June, in July. And we've gone through many iterations of this. And we think that what was presented on the 28th, what we are discussing here this evening, is meeting the goals, objectives of all of the priorities of the Board of Commissioners. Ms. Herman?
Thank you. Good evening, Lawrence. It's nice to see some folks in person. So, good evening. I just have, do I have control? Ashley, thank you. I do have a change that we had to make. Upon further review of the supporting documents connected to this budget last week, we uncovered an error that occurred in the sewer fund whereby we did not include the wages of an open position in the sewer fund. So therefore, we did have to add in a sum of $101,949 for the open position. This has no, because it is the sewer fund, it has no impact on the general fund tax millage proposed tax increase. And the sewer fund also is healthy enough that we don't anticipate any wastewater increase in fees for 2022. And that, that continues. and that continues. I wanted to point that out. It did impact a few of the charts that you had seen, including the average increase of the sewer budget by 0.01%. The major cost centers, we had to adjust that. This number here was previously, you know, just shy of 7.5 million. Now it's a little over 7.5 million. So we just had to change a few things there. That specific detail where it was changed, we don't need all of that, go ahead. View report can actually be found in the salary expense line items in wastewater, which we can get to in a variety of ways. But we just wanted to make sure we pointed it out because it is, you know, a $100,000 change from the last meeting to this meeting. But fortunately, we were able to catch that before you had a chance to adopt the budget moving forward.
Thank you, Ms. Herman.
Thank you very much, Dr. Herman.
And before we, oh, you're fine. Before we close, there's just two other things I want to touch on and a reason I spent some time talking about the budget and we wanted to make sure that people knew where to go with it. It is not lost on the administration that a tax increase is being proposed. We talked about that at length, so I'm not going to talk about that at great length today. It is never easy to propose and recommend a tax increase. Conversely, it was extremely difficult to be the person whose hand had to recommend $2.4 million in cuts and layoffs to get through the pandemic. And we are thankful that we are able to bring some positions back and for the American Recovery Plan Act, that those dollars are allowing us to do that and to ease back into it so that we can keep this tax increase down. But I think it's important for people to understand, and there's two things I want to show everyone. And I showed this in the last presentation. I was asked, is it true that the tax increase is a 22% increase? And is that fair to highlight that? It's true, that's what it is. But what's also true is that we are and have been consistently one of the lower tax rates in surrounding communities. And when you look at this one chart, you could see, when you look at the millage numbers on the left-hand side and the dollars in taxes that you're paying on the right-hand side, that the millage rate is very, very low. And I want to show you one schedule that I don't believe we showed you the actual numbers. But when you go back to 1998, and you look at column B, and you look at tax rate of 3.3, and you look at how long and how many years taxes were held at that lower rate, and you start to look and see 2016, 2017, 2018, 2019, and 2020. In 2019 and 2020, those increases were specific. They were specific for capital investment in the fire department's growth and their capital plan and funding that. It was two years ago to make sure that we funded and met the obligations of the other post-employment benefits. And then, of course, last year, you know, the commissioners did not want to do an incremental increase of a lower amount, no increase is what was demanded. So yes, the increase perhaps is a little larger than anyone would like, but it's as a result of a history of trying not to increase taxes. And we've also been able to make sure that that operating reserve, otherwise, you know, the fund balance, but it's an operating reserve fund, is maintained as well as capital reserve funds. So I just wanted to point out to everyone how diligent this Board of Commissioners has been over the years to keep this projected 5.922, which is far less than a 30 mil threshold. So when you think of it in terms of that, less than six, but 30 is the cap, how much of a percentage is not being utilized? So there is a great deal of effort by previous boards and this board to be mindful of that. And I just wanted everyone to have context and understand. Thank you.
Thank you for pointing that out, Manager Manfredi. You know, I'm going to get to, obviously, it's getting late. I have a comment or two, but I may be brief for him. In fact, I might not say anything at all for right now because it is quite late. I want to get to any questions or comments from commissioners in the room. And then I know that Commissioner Rothman has his hand up and maybe some other of our commissioners participating by Zoom do as well. Any questions or comments from my dear colleagues here in the room? Anybody, Commissioner Rothman? Actually, Ashley, do you need to unmute him? Or can you do that from there? Oh, thank you, thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go right ahead.
Yeah, thanks. Rich, that was a great presentation. I really appreciate you going through the line by lines of what was changed there. I just had a, I just wanted to clarify one or two things regarding the area over by Oliver Thorpe. So Manor Woods is back in with 120,000, correct?
Correct.
And so in taking the money out from the ponds stabilization, we still have dollars in the Oliver Thorpe budget, just to be clear. This is more so for public edification. We still have money to address if the pond is having issues and we're dealing with that algae coming back that we had a problem with a few years ago, geese and deer. We're still going to be able to address all that kind of stuff at the park, correct?
Correct.
All right, I just wanted the public to know that we didn't forget about you on that stuff. Also, I would make the comment that I think we, as a board, do need to focus a considerable amount of time to address the parks and the accessibility and making it more friendly for those that do have a disability. I think that we are behind our neighbors in other areas in that regard, significantly behind. And so it's good that we have money allocated for that, but certainly willing to work with whomever's going to spearhead that to try to make sure that we get the right grants and get the right equipment and engage the community on what they think will be best for the children and adults that are impacted. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Rothman. And I see that Commissioner Thompson has his hand up. And then after him, Commissioner Bowles.
Thank you, President Spiegelman. Ashley, could you put up the slide with the ARPA funding one more time?
Sure, just bear with me.
Sure.
Are you seeing it?
Yeah, I see it. It looks good. So, Manager Manfredi, for the inclusion park, we've lost in the neighborhood of $400,000. Where is that money being reallocated to in this budget?
It is being set aside for future projects.
Okay, so it is there, it's available for our use next year?
Correct.
Okay, okay, thanks. Yeah, I just, for the members of the board, this project is really important to us. We have a committee of parents, some of whom you've heard from this evening. We've been working on it for two years, and these kids are not getting any younger. So this is a project that we really want to see done. So anything we can do to support this project, it's really important to myself, to those family members, to Commissioner Vehe, and to many others. So I really want to see this project get funded and done, hopefully by the end of F5 2023. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. And let me reiterate, as I said before, I mean, this is important to so many of us. This will get done, this absolutely will move forward, the inclusive park. Commissioner Bowles?
Thanks, President Spiegelman. Manager Manfredi, these might be easy ones here, quick ones. When, just thinking about the focus on an inclusive park that is mindful of mobility issues, when we're looking at the other funding for the parks this year, are we factoring in opportunities to increase accessibility at existing spots as well? I mean, is that part of the thinking around these? I mean, in addition to another park, we should be thinking about upgrades that take into account mobility challenges as well? Is that, in your estimation, something we're thinking of?
Yes.
Okay. What, there's $35,000 also in a line item that's just listed as park upgrades? Am I reading, interpreting that correctly as, discretionary is probably the wrong word, but, unbudgeted, excuse me, flexible spending?
It is, yes.
Okay, selfishly, I think about something like Elk Street Playground, which is a small playground, it's very neighborhood-friendly. It could use, I don't know, $8,000, $10,000 in upgrades. It doesn't require a large budget, but that could be something we use there. And then my last question is around wastewater and ARPA. Regardless of whatever long-term decisions we make around wastewater, is it fair to say that the $600,000 that we're proposing allocating through ARPA are, is spending that we absolutely, regardless of what long-term decisions we make, have to invest now, today? Would that be a fair characterization?
It would be wise to invest it now and today. There are a number of improvements that, but that by using this, this money, this 601.3, that it is preserving and keeping the rates, the sewer rates, lower because otherwise it would be coming and depleting our sewer capital within the sewer fund rather than the ARPA fund.
Got it.
So it's prolonging, it's getting much-needed improvements that we otherwise may have to hold off on doing. I don't know if that answers?
It does, yeah, thank you very much. I think my last comment, President Spiegelman, is simply that, looking through this with a fine-tooth comb, it is evident that what we are faced with is a decision where we have to be both responsible about the budget dollars that we're looking at now. I don't see areas within the budget, regardless of whether it's police, fire, and other first responders, whether it's parks and recreation, whether it's wastewater, wherever it is, we are not over-investing in many areas. We are not leaving ourselves a ton of flexibility. But we are, we are making hard decisions based on, I don't know if they were easy decisions, but they were decisions that have under-invested in the township for years, right? When we have to make certain improvements to the township building, we have to make certain investments in parks and recreation. And if we look at that and what's required to do that in this environment is a tax increase, we have to make the hard decision to do that. It's not fun, but we have to invest in ourselves. If we're really as proud to be Abington residents as we all say we are, we have to make the hard decisions. And so I applaud the township staff for putting together what's a very thoughtful and strategic budget. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very well said and much appreciated, Commissioner Bowles. Commissioner Schreiber has her hand up.
I heard you. Unmuting, there we go.
You're unmuting.
Yeah, so I want to, first of all, agree with everything that Commissioner Bowles just said. Couldn't have put those words out better, so thank you for saying all of that. I just have a quick point that I want to make that was kind of made here tonight, but I've talked more at length with Manager Manfredi about this. If we do obtain grant money for some of these things, like on Parks and Rec and stuff, whatever it is, there's several grants out there that will pay for some of these things that are on the list, then that money can go back towards other projects too. So I just want to point that out, that like, if, you know, whatever, 300,000 is in the budget right now, but we find a grant that pays for 100,000 of it, that frees up $100,000 that could go to something else that might have been knocked out before. So I just want to make sure that everybody is aware of that.
That is correct.
Thank you, Commissioner Schreiber. Are there any other questions or comments from commissioners? I'm going to really be very brief with this. Commissioner Bowles, you said it eloquently. So Manager Manfredi, you did a really good job at the previous meeting explaining the issue of what has happened to the township mill. I think, without going over everything, I think everyone knows the township mill is the collective, is $1 for every $1,000 of the collective assessed value of all the properties, all the residential, commercial properties, their value. And why that has been shrinking even though all of us know, you know, you go on Zillow and we all look like geniuses no matter when we bought our homes. Our homes seem to be worth a lot more, you know, sale prices are up. The mills are the assessment value. That is the county assessment. And for most of us, I mean, I'm about to celebrate 20th anniversary in our home in Highland Farms, and our assessment is the same as we inherited from the Sariskis when we bought our house from them. And it's the same as they had most of the time that they were in the house from 1986 to 2002. The only times assessments have changed. The county has not come in and done a mass reassessment of everything to say, all right, well, your properties are worth a lot more, so they're going to be assessed a lot more, so we're going to get a lot more for your tax rate. The only changes to assessments have been when property owners, and it's usually the large commercial property owners, maybe some larger residential property owners, they go to the county and they try to get reassessed. And when they get reassessed, they get reassessed downward. So their tax burden is reduced and the overall value of a township mill is reduced. Please know that if you are at home, and it's completely understandable if you are, if you're looking at this tax rate, if you're anyone, but especially if you're a senior, if you're someone on a fixed income, you know, if you're someone for whom your home is your only real investment and you are wringing your hands over this at the dinner table, please know, and I mean this for every single one of us here and on Zoom, every one of my colleagues, we are losing sleep over it. I'm up all night over it. This is, this is not, these are not decisions that we take lightly. But we learned a great deal from the pandemic. And one of those is the absolutely essential value of having that rainy day fund, our fund balance. It's not money we have in the bank, it's not our mad money. It is the money for when it rains. And we had a deluge over the course of the last 18 months, a calamity the likes of which our community, our county, our country, and the world have not seen in over a century, in so many generations. And the fact, you know, I certainly stand by our extremely difficult decision not to raise taxes last year although we needed to because we were in the middle of this calamity. Things aren't perfect now, but we are coming out of it. This is a difficult but responsible decision. So thank you, Manager Manfredi. I want to thank all of my colleagues for this. With that, the motion has been moved and seconded. So all in favor of advancing our fiscal year 2022 preliminary budget to be the fiscal year 2022 proposed budget? All in favor?
Hi.
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 Opposed?
No.
Okay, I don't think we need a voice vote. I don't think we need a roll call. It's 14 to 1. Motion carries, budget advances. All right, moving on. Thank you, by the way, Vice President Hecker. Moving on to the new business of the Land Use Committee, we will call on Ward 6 Commissioner and Land Use Committee Chair, Mike Thompson.
Thank you, Commissioners Spiegelman. Tonight, we have one new item of business on the Land Use Committee, and that is item number LEU-01-111021, which is a motion to consider waiver of the maintenance bond and release of the security performance bond subject to confirmation of recording of the deed of dedication and final inspection of the dedicated right of way. And I so move.
Second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Do we, I think we've gone over mollycourt a million times. Do we have any questions? Questions or comments from commissioners who are here in the room? Commissioners who are with us via Zoom? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And thank you, Commissioner Thompson, for that great new business of the Land Use Committee. Moving on to the new business of the Public Safety Committee. We have returned to Public Safety Committee Chair and Ward We have returned to Public Safety Committee Chair and Ward 14 Commissioner Lori Schreiber.
We can always have our own meeting, just the four of us.
Thank you, Tim.
Okay, Zoom is jumping tonight, everybody.
Make a motion, Tim.
Commissioner Schreiber, take it away, Public Safety.
Okay, did we lose the main meeting?
No, you're on, Commissioner Schreiber. Can you hear me?
It definitely seems like it.
I don't think they can hear us.
Hey, here we go. They're coming back.
Sorry, that was my fault.
Ashley, are we reestablished with our friends?
We are.
We are.
Did everyone caught the last vote at home, right?
No.
The budget vote, that's the last vote.
Okay, good. All right, fine. All right, so moving along. Commissioner Schreiber, you can take it away on Public Safety.
President Spiegelman will have to redo.
We didn't vote on Mike's.
We did not vote on Land Use.
Oh, I apologize. I apologize, everybody. Did you guys hear, I completely skipped one. Did you hear the molly court vote, the land use vote?
We did not.
No.
You did not? All right, let's just go ahead and let's go and do it again. Can everyone hear from home? Is everyone reestablished on the link here? Good, okay.
Yes.
Yes.
All right. On molly court, on Item Number LEU-01-111021, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right then, molly court passes. Thanks again, Commissioner Thompson. Commissioner Schreiber, take it away.
Thank you. We have five agenda items. PS01 is motion to adopt ordinance number 2188, amending Chapter 156, Vehicles and Traffic, Article 2, Traffic Regulations, Section 7, Speed Limits Established, and Section 14, Stop Intersections, and Article 3, Parking Regulations, Section 25, Parking Prohibited at All Times. No parking between signs, no parking here at a corner. Parking prohibited except certain hours. No stopping or standing. And Section 26, Parking Prohibited During Certain Hours. Section 28, Special Purpose Parking to Add 15 Miles per Hour Speed Limit During the Hours of 8:15 and 9:00 a.m. and 3:15 and 3:45 p.m. To Woodland Road, add stop signs on Edgeway Avenue at Oakdale Avenue, Elliott Avenue at Crestview Avenue, and Woodland Road at Cumberland Road. Add no parking on Edgecombe Avenue from 2456 Edgecombe Avenue to Roslin Avenue, Ferry Hill Road with Fitzwater Town Road and Moritz Hills Avenue from 1065 to Elliott Avenue. Add no parking here at a corner on Jenkentown Road. Handicap parking in front of 1416 Edgewood Avenue, and remove no parking except certain hours on Fitzwater Town Road, and I so move. Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Thank you, that was a big one, Commissioner Schreiber.
It was.
And let's hear it for the stop signs at Woodland and Cumberland. All right, any questions or comments from commissioners here on Zoom? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
PS2 is a motion to adopt ordinance number 2185, amending Chapter 65, Burning, and I so move.
Second.
Second.
All right, we know this one. Commissioner DePlacido, do you have any last comments on this? Probably not, but maybe you do.
No, just once again, thanks, everybody, for their help in collaborating with this. And I just hope, you know, the work that we did here, this is the start of something that we could do with a lot of ordinance that perhaps need for us to look back and see if they hold weight and aren't irrelevant today.
Sounds reasonable to me. Thank you for all your work on this, Commissioner DePlacido. Any questions or comments from commissioners here in the boardroom? Commissioners on Zoom? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations, Commissioner DePlacido.
PS3 is a motion to adopt Resolution 21027 to appoint Township Manager Richard J. Manfredi as an applicant agent, PMA Form DAP01, for the PMA FEMA Disaster Public Assistance Reimbursement Process for Hurricane Ida, DR 4618, and to authorize Mr. Manfredi to sign the PMA Public Assistance Grant Agreement, PMA Form DAP02, on behalf of Abington Township, and I so move.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Manager Manfredi, this is actually pretty straightforward stuff. Any necessary comments? I don't think so. Excellent. Questions or comments from commissioners here, virtually? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
PS4 is a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding between Abington Township and Abington School District regarding crossing guards, and I so move.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Again, this is, I remember this one from back in the day. Any questions or comments from commissioners here on Zoom? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
And PS5 is a motion to adopt Resolution Number 21028, Resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Abington Township approving the memorandum of agreement between Abington Township and school crossing guard for years 2022 and 2023, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Second verse, same as the first. Any questions or comments from commissioners here in the boardroom? On Zoom? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Oh, I'm sorry, opposed? Motion carries.
And that concludes the Public Safety Agenda this evening.
Many thanks, Commissioner Schreiber. Finally, we have the Finance Committee Agenda. We turn to Ward 12 Commissioner and Finance Committee Chair, Matt Vehy.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will first turn to our Treasurer, Jay Blomtholz, if he's still with us.
I do not see him.
Seeing as it's 10 o'clock, that is perfectly understandable. Okay, next up, FC-01. Consider approving the September 2021 expenditures in the amount of $1,961,531.60 and salaries and wages in the amount of $1,985,327.37 and authorizing the proper officials to sign vouchers and payment of bills and contracts as they mature through the month of December 2021. I so move.
Second.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments from commissioners anywhere? Hearing none? Let us have the roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Brodsky?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowles?
Yes.
Commissioner Carswell?
Yes.
Commissioner Rothman?
Yes.
Commissioner Vaughn?
Yes.
Commissioner Schreiber?
Yes.
Commissioner Vehy?
Yes.
Commissioner Weinberg?
Yes.
Commissioner DePlacido?
Yes.
Commissioner Myers?
Yes.
Commissioner Sapone?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowman?
Yes.
Vice President Hecker?
Yes.
President Spiegelman?
Yes. Motion carries.
And last item is FC-02. Consider a motion to ratify the selection of United Healthcare for retirees. I so move.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments from any commissioners? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
That concludes business of the Finance Committee for this evening.
Thank you, Commissioner Vehy. And finally, we will have public comments. We don't have anyone in the room. Public comments on non-agenda items. We don't have anyone in the room, so we'll go right to Zoom.
Ms. Lehman, your microphone has been unmuted.
Did we just have a budget hearing without a single public comment? Mr. Spiegelman?
Please, your three minutes are ticking away. Please continue.
I'm asking you if we, I am invoking...
We had public comment for the budget here, it wasn't a budget hearing. It was a budget motion. Public comment was available, public comment on agenda items at the beginning of the meeting.
And that was for the budget, which was supposed to be, are you kidding? Oh, my goodness, okay. You had that listed as a separate item on the front page of the website. You had it listed as a separate item, 630 budget hearing. Unbelievable. I mean, really. So I'm going to tell you that there's a thousand things. First of all, Mr. Manfredi promised he would answer questions. He's pretended that he didn't know Ms. Herman wasn't answering my questions, okay? She knew he promised to do that, too. They just didn't answer the questions. And instead of answering the questions, he actually took the time to send me the excuses to why he didn't answer the questions, which is, I mean, it tells you something about the integrity here. So we're literally talking about budget line items. For instance, $120,000 for Manor Woods that is literally for trails in Manor Woods, which is literally across the street from a premier park with trails in the woods. And you're doing this and raising taxes on people that you planned to raise in 2019. These are not taxes that you needed to raise now because, you know, assets changed and so on. You planned to do this in 2019. And anybody can watch and see while you give your sob story about how you need to do this because assets have gone down and we're in tight circumstances. Anybody can look at the kinds of things that you're spending the money on and understand that there's nothing there that you're in tight circumstances on if you're spending $120,000 on trails right across from trails. You have trails in the woods and trails in the woods. And while we talk about parks, the Boy Scout Preserve actually was decimated and almost nothing is put in there except a repair and buffer project, which, as you saw at the junior high school, is a joke and a waste of money. That we cannot be doing that kind of stuff. You have, again, the amount...
Ms. Lehman, your time has expired. Thank you for sharing your comments.
No, that is not, that...
Thank you.
Mr. Spiegelman, I don't normally ask to comment, and I will take...
Watch the, I, you know I trust your discretion, just watch the clock.
Thirty seconds.
I haven't had dinner. Go for it.
Manor Woods is not impacting the tax bill. That is American Recovery Plan money. So those are all improvements...
Capital investments from ARPA.
Have nothing to do with the tax increase. Yes, we planned to do this because fiscal prudence requires us to plan not just for one year or six months, but out in the future and model and do things. So yes, and I'm not going to address the sob story.
I think that was my sob story anyway. And I mean that just because obviously it's something I intend to do. All right, let's have Kaki join us again.
Hello, I made a comment earlier in the evening about the budget. So, and I think a couple of other people, or at least one other person did. I have a question about the budget. You don't have to address it now, but in the past, I want to thank Jeanette Herman for responding to an email that I had sent about where to find some things. I guess my question is, in the past, the budgets have, the PDFs, you could do a search, a Word search, and I'm having trouble doing that. So for instance, if I wanted to look at the word fleet, or energy, or roof, that kind, you know, I like that kind of stuff. I'm having trouble navigating it. And, you know, I'm hoping that maybe there's a way. I know you're on a new system, but if there is a way to restore that, at least for the PDFs that you bring up, that would save me from reading a 75-page document where I'm still interested in it, but it would kind of help me skip ahead. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Kaki. And someone will get in touch with you regarding those tech support matters. Next, we have, I think it's Mr. Rooney. I can see a little bit of the screen.
Yeah, Joe Rooney. Now I'm in Western Missouri. Been a long meeting, and thank you all for your patience. A lot of information. Hey, 15 board members. Nobody's talking about retirees, fixed income, laid-off people, the fact that school districts already given us the same story, how they've cut down to the budget to nothing, but it's still $4 million tax increase. So we've got a 22% tax increase, and I'll just propose it's called the John Spiegelman 2021 22% Tax Increase. And we'll try and address it that way from here on because somebody's got to represent the neighbors on my block, on Maple Avenue, who are looking at this and they're not here because it's a long meeting, but they're shaking their heads. And you can say all you want, the taxes are going up. People are paying a lot more money. Businesses have been shut down by the government. People have been laid off. And 22% tax increase? That's nuts. So thank you. And for my neighbors, I'll tell you that I'll do the best I can to stand up against this. Thank you.
All right, thank you for your comments. And we have, I believe, Mr. Tobin is our last person on Zoom.
I'll just use, as far as the budget goes, I'll just use the Manor Woods or whatever it's called. Does that, that's a locked fence in basically just a property at this point that gets no use. Couldn't that $120,000 be used for, to build, as the people were asking for the individual access parks and things like? Couldn't that money be moved for something a little bit more important than Manor Woods? Like, does it have to be budgeted for Manor Woods?
Again, I wasn't really planning on a question-answer, but I will very quickly reiterate. The Manor Woods money is ARPA money. That is not tax increase money. The tax increase is for operating expenses that keep the township running. The ARPA money is being used for capital investments. So it's completely different.
Okay, but does it have to be used for Manor Woods? That 120? Couldn't it be used for another park?
Manager Manfredi, if you want to do this very briefly, go for it.
The Manor Woods project came from a study from a number of years ago, and it has been a project that Commissioner Rothman has asked about every year for at least the last five budgets that I'm aware of. It is only being approved for funding this time to meet the plan that was done because of the American Recovery Plan Act. Can we use this money towards some other improvement? Of course. We always have to take a look at where money can be spent on what projects, which is what we are doing, and we vet every project. And it was determined that we can, in fact, finally complete what was planned years ago with American Recovery Plan money. So can it be used for other things? Sure, it can. But it's being used for this purpose to meet a goal that was set a long time ago.
And we are investing $1.5 million in our parks with ARPA, so we are spreading it around.
Yes, and yeah, just ARPA alone is more than $3 million.
If I could just chime in real quick, this is Commissioner Rothman. Certainly, as we look at Manor Woods, we're going to look to save money on that and redistribute it as well. So it's not something where we're not married to that and not, you know, we'll do it right. Hopefully, we can save some money there, too, and spread it to things like those inclusive parks. Thanks.
Thank you very much for your comments, Mr. Tobin, and glad you were able to get your questions answered. All right. With that, we are adjourned.